Bienvenidos a la reunión de la Comisión de la Comunidad de Medio Calor. Soy Susan Clark, soy la moderadora del año pasado y veremos si eso se sostiene. Quiero presentar a Sarah Merriman, nuestra policía de la ciudad. Ella está dirigiendo las elecciones hoy, así que no estará aquí en el asiento. Entre sus muchas funciones, ella supervisó el hermoso reporte de Green Town que tenéis. También con Mareka Gillis, Mareka está aquí. Esta es la última reunión de la ciudad oficial de Mareka. Está retirada el 1 de abril, así que gracias Mareka por su gran trabajo. Gracias Mareka. Sí. Perdón. Bueno, aún no ha sido elegido, pero Dave... Él ha sido nombrado.
Ha sido nombrado.
Bien, Dave Smith ha sido nombrado, está en la lista de votación. Dave Smith puede ser nuestro nuevo o es nombrado como nuestro nuevo asistente policía de la ciudad. ¡Yay Dave! El Consejo de la Selección, presidente es Peter Hood, Mary Skinner, Liz Scharf, Steve Martin, Phil Hayek. Estos son los que supervisan las funciones de la ciudad y los empleados y han estado trabajando en su presupuesto. Y muchas gracias a Sorscha Anderson por tomar los minutos hoy para que Sarah pueda dirigir las elecciones. Sorscha es la que te va a agradecer cuando hables diciendo tu nombre completo para que pueda ponerlo en los minutos. Tenemos algunos anuncios. Liz, creo que querías hablar sobre el Censo, ¿es cierto?
Sí.
Sí, ¿quieres llevar el micrófono?
Wow. Hola, soy Liz Scharf y trabajo para Capstone Community Action. Y somos miembros del Comité de Completar el Censo del año 2020. Así que he estado representando a las agencias de acción de la comunidad, a nivel estatal, en la red de la red de la Comisión de Censo del año 2020. Así que estoy solo... Encorajándoos a completar el Censo, comienzos el 12 de marzo. Vais a recibir en el correo tu cuestionario del Censo, que este año es un poco diferente. Puedes hacerlo por teléfono, por Internet, o también puedes enviarlo de correo. Si tienes hijos de universidad, los niños completarán su Censo en su escuela. Y si conoces a alguien que es una persona transiente en términos de, ya sabes, vivir con el tío John, deberían asegurarse de que están completando el Censo. Tendremos computadoras en varias locaciones, como bibliotecas. Capstone y Berry tendrán una computadora para gente que puede no poder hacerlo en su hogar. Y tendremos gente que apoye a gente para ayudarlos a navegar lanzando el Censo. Así que es muy importante, es una vez por diez años. Se equivale a solo unos 3,000 dólares, un poco menos de 3,000 dólares por persona en el estado de Vermont durante los próximos diez años. Así que 3,000 cada año durante diez años. Así que para todos aquellos que no se cuentan, esa es una pérdida de financiación federal para todo lo que puedáis imaginar que viene de la gobierno federal. Ruedas, escuelas, atención médica, servicios sociales, Medicare, todo tipo de cosas. Así que hay muchas razones para hacer el Censo. Es seguro y fácil y espero que todos ustedes completes el Censo. Gracias.
Elliot Burd tiene algunos comentarios sobre el estante de la banda.
Hola, soy Elliot Burd del Comité de la Bandera de la Comunidad de Medio Calor. Y sé que es bastante difícil de imaginar sentarse en el bosque ahora mismo, por el estante de la banda, pero quería señalarles que tenemos un programa completo de conciertos, seis conciertos en una fila que ahora hemos reservado. Estos son los conciertos que se llevan a cabo el viernes a las 6:30 en la tarde. Si no has estado allí, son gratis. Hay comida, así que no tienes que alimentar a tu familia antes. Myra Flynn está regresando, fue una gran hita el año pasado. Miriam Bernardo, gran vocalista, Green Mountain Playboys y un número de otros grupos. Así que nos encantaría verlos allí. Solo vamos a publicar la información en el foro de Front Porch, en nuestro sitio web y en Facebook, así que ven. Gracias.
¿Algunos otros anuncios antes de empezar? Tendremos tiempo bajo el negocio de otras cosas también, así que... Bien. Algunas cosas más que necesito decir. Una vez más, este año el Comité de Soluciones de la Comunidad de la Ciudad ofreció a los residentes de la Comunidad de Medio Calor que no pueden asistir a la reunión de la ciudad porque tienen problemas de movilidad o de salud o están fuera de servicio público, asistir a la reunión de la ciudad usando el teléfono y Internet. Y este año no teníamos ninguno, pero ese servicio está disponible para años futuros. Así que gracias a Larry Scharf por todo su trabajo en esto. También quiero agradecer a Liz Scharf y a otros ayudantes en la cocina de la escuela de Ramney por cocinar nuestro almuerzo de espagueti esta noche y a todos los que cocinaron desiertos para el almuerzo. Este es un don de fondos para el departamento de la policía de la Comunidad de Medio Calor, así que gran causa, esperamos que podáis quedarse. Para aquellos de ustedes que tienen hijos aquí en la habitación, son más que bienvenidos. Solo asegúrate de que sean suficientemente silenciosos para que todos puedan oír. El cuidado infantil este año es gratis gracias a Ramney School por financiar eso a través de Community Connection. Así que si tienes hijos en el cuidado infantil, los recogas después de la reunión, pero los recoges antes de que tengas almuerzo. Los niños son bienvenidos aquí para el almuerzo. Gracias nuevamente a Ramney School por hospedarnos. Y necesitará ayuda después de la reunión mover las sillas de regreso, así que después del almuerzo, gracias por estar ahí. Quiero recordaros sobre los formularios azules en vuestras sillas. Tienen información sobre las reglas de Robert y cómo dirigir la reunión. Después de la reunión, por favor, devuélvalos aquí. Y si tienes comentarios, déjalo en los comentarios. De otra forma, también devuélvalos porque los usarán de nuevo el año próximo, así que no los escojes. Lo más importante en esos formularios es que si tienes una pregunta, por favor levanta la mano y pregunta. Está en el formulario de evaluación, así que asegúrate de ir adelante y usarlo. Tengo ocho puntos sobre las reglas de Robert. Recuerdos breves, los moderadores de Vermont se piden que os den esta visión general. Así que ocho temas. Número uno, las reglas de Robert son las reglas parlamentarias básicas de esta reunión, excepto donde la ley estatal de Vermont toma precedence. No podemos cambiar la ley estatal aquí hoy, pero puedes cambiar las reglas de Robert por un voto de dos tercios si deseas. Número dos, por favor, state your name and address the moderator when it comes time for you to speak. Así que si quieres hablar, solo levanta la mano. Cuando estés reconocido por el moderador, tenemos estos maravillosos microfonos que te traerán el micrófono. ¡Yay! Para nuestros jóvenes. E incluso si solo state your name dos minutos antes, por favor state your name de nuevo. Podríamos incluso pedirte que lo escribe, no lo tomes personalmente. Realmente ayuda con los minutos. Te recuerdo que todas las motiones, las discusiones y las remarcaciones deben ser dirigidas al moderador. Así que esto es para ayudar a recordarnos a enfocarnos en los temas y en los temas reales de la mañana en lugar de personalidades. Así que, por ejemplo, si tienes una pregunta del Consejo de la Selección, dices: Madre moderadora, me gustaría saber si el Consejo de la Selección... En lugar de tener conversaciones con varias personas en la habitación. Nos ayuda realmente a enfocarnos en los temas. Número tres, necesitas ser un votante de la Comunidad de Medio Calor para hablar o votar en un artículo en la reunión de la Comunidad de Medio Calor. La excepción es si el grupo quiere suspender las reglas, por ejemplo, para permitir a una persona representando una organización fuera de la ciudad o a alguien que vive fuera de la ciudad y trabaja para ellos. En este momento, ¿puedo tener una muestra de manos de alguien que no es un votante registrado en la Comunidad de Medio Calor? Bien, genial. Excelente. Nos alegra tenerlos, bienvenidos. Solo quiero recordaros que no puedes votar. Y si quieres hablar, recibiremos la permiso del grupo. Número cuatro, por favor, déjalo en los comentarios. Levanta la mano si no entiendes lo que está pasando o si piensas que hay un error que se ha cometido. No tienes que ser un experto parlamentario. Solo levanta la mano y dices, bueno, esto es lo que quiero hacer. ¿Cómo debería convertirlo en una motion? El trabajo del moderador es asegurarse de que todos puedan hacer su punto y proponer la acción que quieren tomar. Número cinco, esta es vuestra reunión. El rol del moderador es ayudaros a lograr el negocio que pretenden hacer. Así que si sientes que el moderador ha hecho una rulita incorrecta, por favor levanta la mano. Las reglas de Robert permiten que el grupo apeléase al decisión del moderador. Es un proceso súper simple y solo asegura que el moderador sirve los intereses del grupo. Número seis, solo podemos dirigir las artículos advertidos. Es en contra de la ley estatal considerar artículos que no han sido advertidos en la agenda. Así que esto significa que no podemos tomar acciones de medida bajo el negocio de otras cosas. Número siete, último, puedes terminar el debate llamando la pregunta. Así que si un votante siente que la deliberación ha pasado mucho tiempo, un votante puede moverse a detener el debate. Solo levanta la mano, estás reconocido y dices, llamo la pregunta. Y luego hay una segunda. Y si dos tercios del grupo votan sí en llamar la pregunta para detener el debate, entonces se detiene, de otra forma, la discusión continúa. En la mayoría de los casos, llamar la pregunta no es necesario. El moderador llamará a un voto cuando él o ella siente que todos los puntos de vista han sido oídos, cuando no hay más manos levantadas. Así que eso evitaría que tuvieras que llamar la pregunta y luego tener el voto de dos tercios. Y finalmente, hay diferentes formas en las que podemos votar. Una vez que el moderador siente que todos los puntos de vista han sido oídos, él o ella llamará a un voto y generalmente es un voto de voz. Así que si estás a favor de la motion, dirás aye. Si está en contra, dirás no o no. Otros tipos de votación que podrías ver, una muestra de manos o un voto de puesta. Siempre puedes solicitar eso, especialmente si no estás de acuerdo con el moderador después del resultado de un voto de voz anunciado. Y finalmente, un voto de papel o secreto. Y esta es una opción realmente importante para saberlo. Si sientes que la privacidad de tu voto es importante, cualquier votante puede moverse a que se tome un voto por voto de papel. Si siete votantes apoyan la motion, entonces pequeños trozos de papel se distribuirán y tú escribirás tu voto y lo pasarás. Y nuestros oficiales de elecciones los contarán inmediatamente. Así que esos son... Una visión rápida de Robert. Y ahora vamos a pasar a nuestra invocación civil. Tenemos a nuestros jóvenes aquí. Vamos a abrir nuestra reunión con esta invocación civil. Es nuestra tradición tener esto leído por un nuevo votante o pronto a ser. Este año, nuestra invocación será leída por Eric Scharf y Eva Jessup, que son dos seniores de la U32. Eva ha vivido en la Comunidad de Medio Calor desde que estaba en el kindergarten. Y además de sus estudios, escribe para el periódico de la U32, The Chronicle, y juega tenis y fútbol. Eric ha vivido en la Comunidad de Medio Calor toda su vida. Este año está tomando sus clases de senior en la Universidad de Norwich a través de su programa de universidad temprano. También podréis reconocer su línea de teléfono como escritora deportiva para el periódico Very Montpelier Times Artist. Y también disfruta de la fotografía y el piano. Y Eva y Eric comparten otro interés en su tiempo libre. Son co-directores de la Food Shelf de la Comunidad de Medio Calor. Así que la próxima vez que sientas que estás demasiado ocupado, solo piensa en Eva y Eric. ¿Dónde están? Bien, ven aquí, chicos.
Así que bienvenidos a la reunión de la Comunidad de Medio Calor. Hemos venido juntos en asamblea civil como comunidad en una tradición que es más antigua que nuestro estado mismo. Hacemos reuniones para tomar decisiones sobre nuestras comunidades. Mientras deliberamos, nos advocate por nuestras posiciones, pero no a costa de los demás.
Nosotras recordemos que hay un enorme desolejo entre decir "Yo creo que soy correcto" y decir "Creo que estoy de acuerdo". Y que nuestros vecinos con los que no estamos de acuerdo son buenas personas con esperanzas y sueños tan verdaderos y altos como los nuestros. Y nosotras siempre recordemos que, al final, cuidar de los demás en esta comunidad es de mucha más importancia que cualquier diferencia que podamos tener. Bienvenidos.
Y mientras estemos aquí, como directores de la Food Shelf, solo queríamos enviar un pequeño recuerzo. Estamos buscando a algunos más voluntarios, así que si alguien tiene algún sábado que estaría dispuesto a darle, nos encantaría añadirlos a nuestra lista de envío. Esto no es como un gran compromiso. Son solo sábados que pueden inscribirse cuatro veces a las 9:00 a 10:30. Así que tendremos una hoja en la parte de atrás. Si alguien está dispuesto a inscribirse, sería genial. Solo venos a encontrarnos al final. Gracias.
Buena regla de fondo, si tienes el micrófono, usa el micrófono, ¿verdad? Bien. Estamos listos para empezar nuestra agenda. El artículo uno es elegir un moderador para el año que viene. ¿Hay una nominación? Jeff Coons. Gracias. ¿Hay una segunda? Julie Moore, genial. Y puedes decir si hay cinco personas que apuntan, puedes pasar por ahí, aunque estos son pequeños. Así que sí, gracias. Bien, ¿hay otras nominaciones? No hay. Vamos a votar en elegir a Susan Clark como moderador para el año que viene. Todos a favor, dices aye. En contra, no. Los ayes tienenlo y has elegido a un moderador. Gracias. Trataré de mantener tu confianza. El artículo dos, elegir a un jurado y agente de la ciudad para el año que viene. ¿Hay una nominación?
Sí, están en la página 10.
Gracias, sí, bien, genial. La advertencia está en la página 10 de tu himenol. El artículo dos, ¿hay una nominación para jurado y agente de la ciudad? Genial, ¿nuevamente tu nombre? Bien, genial. Y el micrófono, si solo apuntaba, boom. ¿Tenemos dos microfonos de apuntadores o solo ustedes? Bien, genial, genial. Así que si estoy señalando, ustedes solo boom, pasan por ahí. Gracias. Todd Dallos, que es nuestro actual agente de la ciudad, creo, en el jurado. ¿Hay una segunda para Todd Dallos?
Tengo una segunda.
Gracias, Mary. Bien, así que Todd Dallos ha sido movido y segundo. ¿Hay otras nominaciones para jurado y agente de la ciudad? No hay. Todos a favor de Todd Dallos, signifique diciendo aye. En contra, no. Los ayes tienenlo. Felicitaciones, Todd Dallos, y gracias. El artículo tres es elegir a todos los oficiales necesarios para el año que viene. Esto es lo que pasa por voto australiano aquí, así que a menos que haya objeción, simplemente pasaremos a la siguiente parte. No hay. Pasaremos al artículo cuatro. Recibir y actuar sobre los informes de los oficiales de la ciudad. ¿Hay una motion? Gracias. Liz mueve y Jeff Coons seconda. Se ha movido y segundo para recibir y actuar sobre los informes de los oficiales de la ciudad. Los oficiales de la ciudad ponen informes interesantes en vuestro informe de la ciudad, así que este es un buen momento para hacer preguntas si no van a aparecer bajo otros artículos. Así que, por ejemplo, si tenías preguntas relacionadas con dinero, tendría sentido guardarlas para nuestra discusión bajo el presupuesto, pero si tienes otros temas que quisieras discutir. Creo que Phil Hayek tenía algo que quería decir en este momento. Uno de los informes.
Hola, perdón, mi nombre es Phil Hayek. Además de ser seleccionador, soy su representante en el interno de la red de la Comunidad de la Comunidad de la Ciudad de San Vermont, San Vermont Fiber Board. Y solo quería daros una rápida actualización. Jeremy Hanson, que es presidente de ese board, puso un informe aquí, pero fue escrito hace mucho tiempo. Hay un número de cosas que han pasado desde entonces. Ha agregado Moretown a la Comunicación Unión, lo que hace un total de 18 ciudades que ahora han comprometido. Y hemos decidido cerrar la membresía en este momento. Es un distrito bastante grande para tratar de conseguir Internet también y con algunos realos desafíos debido a la naturaleza rural de todas nuestras comunidades. Han recibido apenas unos 100,000 dólares en varios donativos, algunas donaciones, un trabajo en kind, y todo eso es realmente importante porque nos permite calificar para otros donativos, así que podrías tomar el premio de uno dono y usarlo como un equipo de kind para otro. Así que fue un poco de lucha al principio, pero estamos a un nivel bastante bueno ahora. El don más importante fue un don estatal que fue aprobado el año pasado en la legislatura. Era un don de 60,000 dólares, pero se dividió en dos partes, 30 y 30. La primera fase es hacer un estudio de la feasibility. Y si el estudio de la feasibility realmente prueba que es posible hacer lo que queremos hacer o es feasible hacer lo que queremos hacer, entonces lo subimos y la segunda mitad se da premiado para permitir al distrito hacer un plan de negocios oficial. Y eso es realmente, realmente importante, esas dos piezas en cuanto a la comunidad de préstamos. Así que hemos recibido esa primera fase, junto con algunos fondos de USDA y otros, y hemos contratado una empresa llamada Interile de Massachusetts, que es una empresa de consultas internacional sobre temas de telecomunicación. Y en realidad están trabajando haciendo el estudio de la feasibility mientras hablamos. Estamos seguros de que ese estudio de la feasibility va a demostrar que es bueno y luego pasaremos al plan de negocios con el segundo 30,000 dólares. Interile hará esa parte para nosotros. Y una vez que pasamos a esa fase, esto nos hace en posición para aplicar préstamos. Proyectos de comunicación son considerados a high risk, lo cual es por qué el estado tiene un fondo que nos permitirá calificar para financiar. Vamos a estar buscando, suponiendo que pasemos el estudio de la feasibility y el plan de negocios, vamos a estar buscando un préstamo de 4 millones de dólares como parte inicial que nos permitiría construir aproximadamente 150 millas de fibra. Y espero que la construcción empiece en un año. La... Déjame parar un minuto. Hicimos muchos encuestas. Algunos de ustedes en esta habitación probablemente han respondido a esas encuestas. Tengo un número de cosas en el foro de Front Porch. Durante mucho tiempo, la Comunidad de Medio Calor tenía la mayor respuesta a esas encuestas. Descendimos a la segunda porque Plainfield hizo una presa conservada hacia el final y nos derrotó. Así que ahora mismo, la forma en que se encuentra es que Plainfield tenía la mayor respuesta, la Comunidad de Medio Calor la segunda más alta y Callis la tercera. Y esto es importante porque en el estudio de la feasibility se muestra interés y hay mucha información sobre quién se suscribiría, qué estarían dispuestos a pagar, cuánta velocidad quieren, qué tipo de efectos esto podría tener en los negocios y en la comunidad. Así que clasificar en los tres topos cuando el estudio de la feasibility se escribe es bastante importante, así que todos ustedes merecen los saludos por seguir realizando esas estudios y mantenernos en los tops en los rankings. La Comunidad de Medio Calor también está situada geográficamente de una manera bastante buena, porque con Moretown como socio también conecta a Waterbury y Montpelier, aunque Waterbury y Montpelier no son... Montpelier es un miembro, aunque también pertenecen a otro consorcio y tienen una buena velocidad alta, pero son miembros. Así que espero que con la respuesta a las encuestas, nuestra ubicación geográfica, la disposición, el deseo de obtener una alta velocidad, que en realidad seríamos una de las primeras comunidades en ese desarrollo de 150 millas. Así que mantengamos nuestras manos cruzadas y en un año veremos qué pasa. Tal vez esté aquí junto a tu gorro de la mano. Oh, lo siento, no funcionó, pero esperamos, ¿vale? Gracias.
Otros comentarios o preguntas bajo los informes de los comités. Los comités que quieran tomar este tiempo para reportar. No, bien. Así que el artículo cuatro, recibir y actuar sobre los informes de los oficiales de la ciudad. Todos a favor, dices aye. En contra, no. Gracias. Siempre hay una gran discusión en el entrenamiento de la moderadora de la ciudad sobre lo que pasa si recibimos y actuamos sobre los informes de los oficiales de la ciudad si la motion falla. Nada básicamente, pero de todos modos, es un buen momento. El artículo cinco, ¿permitirán los votantes la pago de todas las tasas de propiedad al tesoro de la ciudad como proporcionado por la ley y sin descuento en cuatro instalaciones como sigue? Voy a leer esto una sola vez. El primer instalamiento se hará antes o antes de las 4:30 PM del 20 de agosto de 2020. El segundo instalamiento se hará antes o antes de las 4:30 PM del 20 de noviembre de 2020. El tercer instalamiento se hará antes o antes de las 4:30 PM de febrero de 2021. Y el cuarto instalamiento se hará antes o antes de las 4:30 PM de mayo de 2021, excepto si marcado por el Servicio Postal de Estados Unidos antes o antes de las fechas mencionadas de acuerdo. ¿Hay una motion sobre el artículo cinco? No se ha movido. ¿Tu nombre? Laura Lyle. Mueve el artículo cinco, ¿es la segunda? Amy White 22. El artículo cinco, autorizar pago de todas las tasas de propiedad al tesoro de la ciudad bajo las fechas mencionadas, se ha movido y segundo. ¿Hay alguna discusión sobre el artículo cinco? No, no hay. Bien. Así que vamos a votar sobre el artículo cinco. ¿Permitirá la ciudad pago de todas las tasas de propiedad al tesoro de la ciudad como proporcionado en este artículo? Todos a favor de el artículo cinco, dices aye. En contra, no. Los ayes tienenlo y el artículo cinco pasa. El artículo seis, para ver si la ciudad cobrará interés a la tasa de 0,5% al mes o una fracción de la de instalaciones de impuestos de la fecha de pago aplicable. ¿Hay una motion sobre el artículo seis? Bien, ¿alguna? Y una segunda. Des Clark. El artículo seis se ha movido y segundo para ver si la ciudad cobrará interés a la tasa de 0,5% al mes. ¿Alguna discusión sobre el artículo seis? No. Bien. En ese caso, todos a favor de el artículo seis, signifique diciendo aye. En contra, no. Los ayes tienenlo. Y estamos en el presupuesto. No, esperaremos, esperaremos en el presupuesto. Haremos eso a las 5:15 porque eso está previsto por cierto. Pasaremos al artículo ocho y volveremos al artículo siete a las 5:15. El artículo ocho, ¿permitirá los votantes apropiar la suma de 5,000 dólares al Fondo de Conservación de la Comunidad de Medio Calor? ¿Hay una motion sobre el artículo ocho? Julie Moore mueve, ¿hay una segunda? ¿Recibiste eso, Sorscha?
Sí.
Bien. El artículo ocho se ha movido y segundo para apropiar 5,000 dólares al Fondo de Conservación de la Comunidad de Medio Calor. ¿Alguna discusión de la Comisión de Conservación? No discusión, ¿algún pregunta? Sí. El micrófono está aquí, por favor.
Gordon Grunder. ¿Puede alguien decirnos cuánto está en el fondo o dónde va?
Okay, Lee en la parte de atrás. ¿麦克风...? ¿Puede irse a la parte de atrás y darle el micrófono a Lee? Levanta la mano, Lee.
Lee Rosberg, soy el presidente de la Comisión de Conservación. Actualmente tenemos alrededor de 9,000 en el Fondo de Conservación. Nuestro último uso de él fue 10,000 dólares que fue a conservar tierras. La propiedad de Hunger Mountain Headwaters, que cubrió el primer kilómetro o así de la trama de caminata de Hunger Mountain. Antes de eso, usamos alrededor de 20,000 dólares del fondo para comprar 40 acres para agregar al bosque de la ciudad y proporcionar mejor acceso recreativo. Así que esos son los tipos de proyectos que buscamos, principalmente proyectos de conservación de tierras en la ciudad.
Genial, gracias, Lee. ¿Algunas otras preguntas, comentarios? No hay. Vamos a votar sobre el artículo ocho. ¿Permitirá los votantes apropiar la suma de 5,000 dólares al Fondo de Conservación de la Comunidad de Medio Calor? Todos a favor, dices aye. En contra, no. Los ayes tienenlo y el artículo ocho pasa. El artículo nueve, ¿permitirá la ciudad autorizar gastos de hasta 8,000 dólares para comprar dos señales de retroalimentación de velocidad radar para instalarse en las calles norte y sur de la ruta 12 de Vermont en Putnamville? ¿Hay una motion sobre el artículo nueve? Karen Ginnett mueve, Dave Shepherd seconda. El artículo nueve se ha movido y segundo para autorizar gastos de hasta 8,000 dólares para comprar dos señales de retroalimentación de velocidad radar para instalarse en las calles norte y sur de la ruta 12 de Vermont en Putnamville. ¿Hay discusión sobre el artículo nueve? Jeff Coons, el micrófono está aquí, gracias.
Hola, Jeff Coons. Me pregunto, ya pagamos al condado para monitorear nuestras ruedas para la velocidad. Si ya pagamos eso, ¿por qué queremos tener esto? Y dado que serían permanentes, una vez que la gente se acostumbre a que están allí, el impacto se pierde. Así que parece que sería un mejor uso tener el condado de Washington monitoreando más lugares como Norton Road donde podrían parcar para radar y también más allá de la ruta. Solo parece que esos 8,000 dólares podrían ser usados mejor que comprando estas señales de radar para algo que ya pagamos para tenerlas.
Responses, comentarios adicionales, sí. El micrófono está aquí.
Hola, Bob Lucas. Así que supongo que para ir adelante y volver a eso, obviamente estamos viendo que el Departamento de la policía solo utiliza la mitad de su presupuesto del año pasado. Sabiendo ese área, obviamente habiendo trabajado en este área por algún tiempo, entiendo que hay un problema de velocidad ahí, pero es, como puedo decir, probablemente no es diferente de muchas otras secciones de esa ruta, incluyendo también la rueda Centar. Pero obviamente no estamos tomando ninguna acción necesaria en eso. Sé que... I know the state police have a portable cart, a speed cart, that they can actually go ahead and deploy there. I know the Sheriff's Department also has carts that also, obviously, they can go ahead and deploy. I guess the final question that I would have is, obviously, it does give feedback, but who's going to be utilizing that feedback? Would it be the state police? Would it be the Sheriff's Department? Would it be the town? Who's going to be monitoring that? Thank you.
Thank you. If there are people in the room who would like to respond to those questions and comments, feel free to raise your hand. He's right here in the back. He's coming at you.
Hi there. A bunch of us are here for Putnamville today and I think we can all stand up.
Sure, can you say your name?
Albe Bourne, Putnamville, Middlesex. And I agree with that gentleman's comments that the Sheriff's Department uses half of the, you know, half of the budget. We're just, we don't want to say that we're totally different over there at Putnamville, but comparable to Route 2 and Camp Meade, Redhead Bakery. We just feel like the volume of traffic that has occurred when people's on their cellphones from Route 12 to Mount Pelear every day is something that all 15 homes on top of everybody to Culver Hill, to Worcester, and Middlesex deal with. And I understand Center Road, you know, and Brook Road, there is speeding everywhere. I just, the volume of the speeding, the volume of the traffic is kind of what we're, you know, we're at what's end over in Putnamville. We've had Casella guy, you know, just to give you a brief scenario of all this, the state did a survey, there's speeding in Putnamville. So as you can see, the signs got moved 0.51 miles north of Putnamville. So the state has made a decision that there is speeding because they had car counters across the road. The accident, the reported accidents is unbelievable in Putnamville since it was 2011. A bunch of us went to the AOT Board meeting to meet Secretary Flynn because they had a meeting about Putnamville. And that's where the state has recommended to the town, I believe that was the wording, to install the solar radar feedback signs in Putnamville. I have an eight-month-old boy, there's at least a dozen kids in Putnamville. There is a blind school bus stop at Norman Road in Putnamville with three kids, two feet off the road, the house is two feet off the road, and the bus has to turn around there. There's probably a change down the road where the bus will turn around some other place, but that bus stop is always going to be there among the other few bus stops in Putnamville. And I guess really just to reiterate is that we just feel like the danger has been there forever. There's no curb cut in Putnamville, there's no curb cut at Culver Hill. The bicyclist, we had, you know, I don't want to bring up bad news, we had a couple of fatalities, you know, near the Shady Real intersection within the last couple of years. The unreported accidents is more than, I mean, some people here in Putnamville can tell you, they've had cars in their, Mary Kay can tell you that she's had cars in her apple tree. We've had cars on Bill's, you know, in his lawn. It's kind of, you know, we're just asking for the community to look at Waterbury, Stowe, all over the state where you see them popping up. It's because the community has come together and helped out a portion of the community, you know. There's no doubt that speeding's an issue, but we're just, we're totally different over there. And the volume of traffic, the thousands of cars, hundreds of cars that go by a day, they're all on Facebook, they're all on their phone, and we have kids at the bus. Everybody's just trying to live a life over there, but life has changed over the past 50 years. You know, I can't move the houses, I can't move the ledge cut. Again, we're just asking for the community's support. Talking with some of the town people, we think the price could be a lot less than $8,000. The ones in Stowe and Waterbury are, you know, it's solar. So there's really no maintenance, you know, obviously, after 20 years, you know, there would be some maintenance, but the one-time cost is what we're asking for. For everybody that travels on Route 12, these signs would be a reminder to go into the beach, taking the turn at Rumney to Shady Real, flying up Route 12. These signs would be a reminder back and forth, north and south, to slow down in Middlesex. And I'm not going to throw, you know, stones in our house, but, you know, we all need a reminder once in a while, and that's why you're seeing these all over the state of Vermont. And appreciate, appreciate everybody's support and answer any questions.
Brian Frinder guest. So 8,000 divided by how many of us live in Middlesex? We've got three bucks, something like that. I don't know. Do the math.
Other comments? Questions? Yes. Okay. Hang on a second, right over here.
David Lawrence.
Just grab the mic, David.
Hi, David Lawrence. Just a quick question because I just noticed the AOT application says that a speed study has to have been done. Was it done already? And if so, great, I'd like to hear the results. And if not, what would be the cost of the speed study in addition to the signs?
Hi, Cara Maloney. Yes, a speed study was conducted and foolishly, I didn't bring the results, this was done at the end of last summer, I believe. They set up solar speed signs and they measured the speed and they rejected our appeal to reduce the speed limit to 25 because it is a state highway. And I don't know the exact language, but they denied our request based on the fact that they cannot on a state highway reduce, some of you will know this better than me, you can't reduce from a 50 to a 25 or a 30. You can't make that big of a reduction within the space we had. So they did make some adjustments. They moved this 35 sign further south as you're coming north into the village. So they moved the side, the 35 speed limit sign further out so that folks would have a more of a note of. And they did the same on the north end of town. And they put some little red flags up and I think those are helping. We noticed anecdotally a huge difference in the speed of people passing through town when the solar flashing sign of 35 went up for a couple of months last year. I, we have to get our mail right on Route 12. The difference in Putnamville from many other roads in town is the sightline. There is virtually no sightline. And you know how long it takes, this is pretty clear, how long it takes to stop a car going 35 miles an hour. The average speed, I think, and folks correct me if I'm wrong, that the state found 43 miles an hour for cars passing through Putnamville. We pulled out to come to town meeting, a car came, so we live right behind the bait shop, behind Jim and Sherri Page. We have, we turned left to go south, car was coming north. They have no visibility of us pulling out. And if you're going 35, it's a tight turn. I am nervous every time I pull out, and I don't have children. Some of my neighbors have a worse situation in terms of visibility. We totally understand other people's need and we would, we're very amenable to a mobile unit that can be moved to other parts of town and rotated around with either the Select Board or the road commissioners at their direction and rotating around on some kind of schedule around town because we've seen on Front Porch Forum, people expressing concerns in other parts of town. So we don't want to be the only ones that benefit from this. I think our needs are unique. I would invite any of you to come and try to pull out of our driveways anytime and urge your support for up to 8,000. It may not take that much, but to authorize the Select Board to investigate and solve, help us with this problem.
Other comments and questions? Yeah, I saw a hand over here.
Hi, Amy Whitehorn. So Albe was kind enough to take a guess a minute how much the cost would be per residence. Dorinda has done an amazing job of creating a table that is on page 36 of the Town Report that actually will show you, based on three different levels of property value, how much each of these special articles will actually cost, again, based on house value of 150, 150,000, 200,000, and 300,000 dollars. And at the lowest level, Albe, just to comment again, the, it's, it would be $5.31 for a property of 150,000 dollars. So I wanted to point that out because where we spend our money, we should be aware of where we're spending it, how much we're spending, how much it costs per household. And while I recognize the needs of the folks in Putnamville and the portable sign sounds great to me personally, the idea that you're special and unique, we are all special and unique. My wife is a school bus driver and I have to wave at the school bus to get it to slow down on our road. She doesn't drive it. But traffic goes way too fast through our town, period. And that's true everywhere and it's dangerous everywhere. So again, I would consider, we want to think about spending money on something like this. Let's do it in a way that isn't fixed in its location. And the cost of the study, I was curious, do we know how much the speed study actually did cost and how it was paid for?
There's a question. I don't know if the Select Board can answer this question. How much did this speed study cost or got paid for?
The state, the state went ahead and did the whole study.
Okay, great. There was a hand over here. Right in the back? Nope, nope, you're going too far. There you go.
Hi, Kathy Shapiro. If you already addressed this, somebody else can give me the answer, but what is the evidence that these radar feedback signs actually reduce speed overall? I came in late, so.
Would anybody like to address the question of evidence about whether the speed signs work? Is that what you'd like to address?
Yes.
Okay, so microphone right back there. And this will be the last comment and then we can take a break.
It's just a basic reminder, LED lights, I mean, nighttime or daytime, it's just a wake-up for all of us, you know, like again, stones on glass houses. Again, we're just, you know, $5.31, you know, we're just asking for some help if there is willingness to, for the town to look at a portable situation. There's no doubt that there's speeding everywhere. I guess our whole point was is we have hundreds of cars driving in and out of Putnamville, Two-Mount Player every day, from Waterville, Hyde Park, they go to J-Peak. We're just asking for the community's support for the future of the children and the families of Putnamville and just for, you know, for everybody in that area. But again, we're willing to talk if we.
Okay, we have two more, we have two more minutes, so. Yeah, right up here, actually, turn around and walk this way. John, maybe you can lean back.
I don't have any hard evidence, but I know they work for me. I love to have that reminder. It's going to cost me nine bucks based on the chart on page 36. And I would happily, this year and then next year and then the next year after, if we can identify the most critical areas. We all know Putnamville, it's a critical little zone in there. It's tough, sightlines are impossible. But if we can identify two or three other places where we're worried about our people being injured, and I can pay 10 bucks next year and then the year after, I am so happy to do that. We put out money to all these other social service and help organizations. I think we could put our money to keeping our people in Putnamville safe and then move on to the next critical area in town.
You need to wait for the microphone to get past you? Yes?
I don't have my protocol, so coach me, Susan. But if I'd like to propose an amendment that we change the wording, so not so that the signs be installed on the north and south lanes of Vermont Route 12 in Putnamville, but that includes that installation, but that they would be rotated so that we're voting on not a specific installation forever in one spot.
Right, okay. So, and remind us of your name?
I'm Jane Dudley.
Jane Dudley, okay. And Select Board, the question is, is this a necessary amendment or would you feel empowered if this were to pass to move the?
No, I would not.
Okay, okay. So you're suggesting an amendment to be, okay, I'm just looking at some good wording, including use on the north and south lanes of Vermont Route 12 instead of to be installed? Would that do it? Including but not limited to?
It's a totally different thing. They're asking for signs that are installed.
How can you make that switch? You don't know what that, what that cost would be for a temporary thing to be moved. So how can we, how can we vote on that kind of switch out if we don't have data about what that would cost?
So the question is whether, John Puleo asks whether $8,000 is the right number to be asking for. Do we have any knowledge about whether a portable? Thank you. That was a motion to change the wording on Article nine. We do, we're going to need a second. Shall the town voters authorize expenditures of up to $8,000 to purchase two radar speed feedback signs, including but not limited to use on the north and south lanes, et cetera? Is there a second to that motion? Sarah Seidman seconds. All right, so we're discussing that amendment and John Puleo just asked, do we know the cost of a portable sign? Is this the right number to be asking for? Does anybody have that information? Microphone over here.
Susan, who was indicated to speak?
Creative shirt in the back.
Uh, no, actually, black shirt with the stripe, sorry. And then.
I can tell you that the portable speed carts are more than, two, two speed carts would be more than that amount. You could probably get in the ballpark of probably one, but definitely not two.
Okay. And right back here.
I was going to reiterate the same thing. Ray Hickory.
Thanks.
What that gentleman just said, the portable ones are going to be more expensive than the permanent ones. If you try to go to the portable ones, I can tell you right now, it's going to be a lot more expensive. And for what, I know what they're doing because I do some work in state highways and let me tell you, it's, it's not easy. And I've worked in Putnamville. So putting these signs up, I'm assuming it's going to be a permanent deal, that those signs would stay up there. I think trying to take them down and putting them someplace else is going to, I don't think it's going to work that well. And I don't even live in that, down in that area. But what that gentleman says, I think it's a good idea to do this, but do it as inexpensive as we can.
We are working on the amendment to include but not limited to, so this is a touchy little place that we are, and I'd like to get through this amendment before we move onto the budget. Is there any other discussion on this amendment? Yes.
I just want to second everything that John said. If it's more expensive to have a mobile one, let's use our money well and protect the area that has been long identified as being an extreme need. And I'm open to hearing other neighborhoods. I know I don't have an issue with our neighborhood, so it's not the same type of issue everywhere in Middlesex. And if we can identify another place next year, I'm open to supporting that. And I'd prefer to do it right the first time and have that, that one area that has been identified with the work that's been done, taken care of.
Okay. That was Lisa Carlson. Back here, back.
Just to reiterate, this gentleman's comment about the fact that the budget's only half-used, I mean, I think when we had met with the town, they had said that obviously, some of that money, or I don't know how that all works, but it could get allocated possibly at the end of the year fund and then it would just go back into, and again, next year, if Camp Meade or Shady Real, if the principal of the school came next year, we'd be right here again and we'd, you know, five, six bucks or whatever it ends up being, we would definitely, you know, so, you know, get on these subjects of the issues in town of where the speeding is and we would vote, there's no doubt about it.
Okay, so the issue right now is the amendment of adjusting the wording of Article nine to say that the feedback signs would be including but not limited to use on the north and south lanes.
Call the question.
John Puleo would like to call the question. Is there, he's proposing to end debate. Is there a second? Okay. Say your name nice and loud.
Dexter LeFever, seconds.
So we will now be voting on whether to end debate on the amendment. So if you would like to stop talking about this amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it, so, we are now gonna vote on the amendment, and the amendment would change Article 9 to read, shall the town voters authorize expenditures of up to $8,000 to purchase two radar speed feedback signs, including but not limited to use on the north and south lanes of Vermont Route 12 in Putnerville. If you're in favor of this amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
The noes appear to have it? The noes do have it, and the amendment fails. So, we're back to the article as written, and what I'd like to do now is pause, and move to the budget, and then we'll come back to Article 9 as written. This allows us to stick with our warning, which says that Article 7, the budget, will be considered as a special order of business at 5:15. The reason we do that is so that people who only want to come and talk about the big money issue know when to come, and they're already sitting here going, why haven't you done this 10, 7 minutes ago? So, Article 7, to vote a fiscal year 20, 20, 2021 budget of $1,323,867 to meet the expenses and liabilities of the town, and authorize the Select Board to set a tax rate sufficient to provide the same. Is there a motion on Article 7? Jeff Coons moves, is there a second?
Nancy Riley.
Nancy Riley, seconds, so, Article 7, to vote a fiscal year 20, 20, 2021 budget of $1,323,867, has been moved and seconded, is there discussion on Article 7? The budget is on page 39 of the Town Report, and the discussion begins on page 35, hopefully you've had a chance to look at that. Discussion about the budget. Also, page 23, the report for the budget. Lots of good information about the budget discussion, yes?
Dev Gerard, I just would like to ask about the increase, the big increase in the amount for the listers' wages, and what that's all about, just some history on that, clarification, thank you.
Would the Select Board like to respond to that question about increase in the listers' wages?
Excuse me, I'll try, Peter Hood. So, the listers have a lot of work to do every year, and that work takes a lot of time, and as much as it is a big percentage increase, the actual amount of money is not that large, but it's just to more accurately reflect the amount of time that they need to properly do their work.
Other discussion, questions about the budget? Yes, right back there? Big stand-up, so she knows where to bring it.
Victor Dwyer, I see in there, I was wondering if the Select Board could tell us, you wanted some money to hire another excavator, and another truck, and I'd like to know specifically where this work would be done, and exactly what you're talking about, seems like a lot of money, extra $40,000, was it, or?
Forty thousand. Yes, Steve Marm, we have gone through a lot of storms, and everything that has set us, set us back in what we should be doing for our general maintenance, and that includes some of the mud mitigation that we've done in the past. So, anyway, we got ourselves behind and with this storm, so, this money would hire two trucks, rent an excavator, and hire an operator to do just ditching, so that we could catch up on our work and continue to go with our five-year plan.
He asked about where, where it would be, and who would be doing it?
Where? It would be all over town, as far as ditching, it'd be one month's worth of ditching.
Follow-up question?
I guess, I guess if I was gonna vote for that amount of money, I guess I'd wanna know a little more specific, where you're gonna be, I mean, is this gonna be on our main arteries, or are we gonna go on our secondary roads? I'd like to know, who, who are we hiring? And who is gonna be in oversight of what they're doing?
Well, as far as who we're hiring, we'd have to rent a couple of trucks.
Can everybody hear Steve? Does he need to move it closer?
Oh.
Oh, move it a little closer.
Is that better? We'd have to rent a couple of trucks for that time period, we'd actually rent an excavator, and I believe we can hire an operator, if, you know, for that one-month period. And as far as specifically where, like I said, we would do our, probably try to get our main arteries in town that haven't been ditched, those would be some of the first ones, but, we would try to get as much of the roads done as we possibly could to catch up.
Other comments and questions about the budget? Ray?
Yes, Ray Hickory. The thing I, I am thinking about is, it's a lot of money, but, I also think that our town road crew is taking on a lot more work than what they really should be doing, because these projects that they're doing, there is taking them so much time to do it, that the rest of the town is suffering from the road maintenance. Now, you're saying to try to catch up, well, why do we need to spend this amount of money to catch up? So, if, if it happens to be that, hey, you don't take on so mu, so big a job, or, you bid it out to a company that can come in and do this so that our road maintenance crew can do this ditching as the best that they can, because the time that they're spending doing these mud mitigation things, they're not getting the roads done. And we're spending money that we just don't have, and there's people in town that are on fixed incomes, they can't afford all this stuff, extra stuff. Some of the work that's being done, like grading the roads, we're on a four-day work week, from what I understand, so, the guys are only doing four days a week, well, during the course of the summer, the last two years, if you stop and looked at it, there was, the Fridays, they're not even working, you might, if it rains on Tuesday or Wednesday, the grader doesn't go out to take care of our roads, so, Friday's a good day, well, that grader should be out there working, it isn't. Why, why don't we go back to a five-day work week for the crew, instead of this four-day work week, so that those days that are, are good, we can utilize our money a little bit better than what we are, and doing this extra money that you want to catch up, so, it takes us a little bit longer to do the job, take, do a smaller part of the job, and let it go out further. I just can't see in spending that much money when we can just back up, slow down, don't do as much as what we're trying to get done in a hurry.
Thanks, yeah, Peter Hood.
Hey, just, just a, just a couple of quick things, and I understand and appreciate your concern, thank you very much, I, it's important for everybody here to understand that the road crew is working the same number of hours as they work on a five-day schedule, they're just doing it in four days, now, I do understand your point that, you know, if the roads need to be graded because there's a storm on a Friday, and they're not working on Friday, they're not gonna do it, now, if it was a situation where the road was closed or impassable, or something like that, they'd be called in, and it'd be an overtime situation, and it would be taken care of. In terms of, in terms of the extra money, this was an idea that we came up with, there were a lot of careful thought, we had two incidents just in the past year, which set us back, two storms, and we did in fact, hire an outside contractor to come in and do the work on, do the work on Macy Road, because there was no way we could do it, and the road was closed, so, in situations like that, we do do that. We believe that doing it this way, by hiring extra equipment and hiring some short-term people, will allow us to get caught up on the work we have in town, and it will be a more cost-effective way of doing this. I will wholeheartedly admit, A, it's a lot of money, and B, it's an experiment. Thank you.
Okay, Matt, in the blue shirt, just.
Hi, my name is Matt Dwyer, and I was on the Select Board for three years, and at that time, we ended up purchasing the first excavator in this town, and the concept behind having that excavator was that we were gonna take on some mud mitigation, and slowly work at it when we could, but making sure that we prioritized how we did that, and continued to ditch the roads, and cut the brush, and do our maintenance along the way. I don't really feel that the management has been done very well in that order, and I've actually watched what's gone on the past three or four years, they seem to go at the secondary roads, rather than apply their efforts to the main arteries, where, you know, we have a lot of traffic on East Hill, Center Road, Brook Road, and I think that would be your priority to go after first. As far as the 10-hour workdays, I've been in business for quite a few years, and I'm sorry, you do not get 10 hours out of a person, you're lucky to get seven real hours. So, in the line of work that we're in, trying to grade the roads, you need to utilize the weather to your benefit, so, when we lose that Friday, that they're taking off for their three-day weekend, or whatever they're choosing to do, that's a big deal. I think we really ought to rethink the whole four-day work week.
So, the question is about the budget, are there new folks who would like to speak?
Kyle Landis Maronella, I mostly raise my hands, my daughter would have to bring me the microphone, she's looking bored over there. I just had a question about this increase this year, how much of it is kind of one-time, and how much is baked in, in other words, next year, will we see a decrease in the budget if we approve this one?
The Select Board want to address that question?
That's a very good question. For years and years and years, as we say in our, and I would refer you to our Select Board Budget Report on page 23, we have been able to keep the increases in the budget at a pretty reasonable rate, 2%, 3%, 4%, as long as I can remember, we've been able to keep the increases to that amount. Between, between these two storms we had, which really hurt us, and some unanticipated other expenses, which you can read in that report, but most of it's the roads, we had a big deficit last year, for the first time in our, in our town's history, we can't continue to operate with the deficit, we don't have a fund balance to support that, so, you know, we have to, we have to, we have to deal with what the good Lord gives us in terms of the we, weather, if we could all predict the weather, we'd be better at telling you, I would like to hope that, you know, this isn't gonna continue, but, boy, when you listen to the prognosticators, they tell us we're gonna have more storms, they're gonna be more severe, et cetera, et cetera, so, I don't dare promise that the budget is gonna go down, we're trying to react to the conditions as they exist.
Other comments, questions, Sarah? She's ringing.
Hi, my name's Sarah Merriman, I'm your town clerk, at least until 7:00 PM, we'll see what happens. I feel really weird addressing town meeting, and I know what people mean when they say it's horrible, because you're gonna see each other again, and you're gonna take very unpopular positions, and I'm about to take a pretty unpopular position, but please just hear me out. So, I'm gonna start off with my Price Chopper story, I was in Price Chopper the other day, and there was a woman in front of me and a woman behind me, and the woman behind me said to the woman in front of me, hey Cheryl, are you going on vacation this summer? And she said, no, we gotta put on a new roof, and the woman behind me said, I've done those roofcations too. People, we need a roofcation in this town, I am sorry to tell you that, if I think of you as our family members, and this is our house, we are in bad shape. I'll start off with the road crew, the roads, good example, sorry, see, I'm getting nervous here, I've done a lot of public speaking, let me get, you're seeing other people, but, so, the highway department right now cannot be insulated, because if the highway department is insulated, I'm talking about the shed, which is 40 years old, which should have been destroyed 20 years old, 20 years ago, because it's a temporary structure, if it is insulated, the snow will cave in on the roof, we have to replace that. We have a town hall with a vault that's, cannot accommodate this, do you know what the radon level is in the vault on weekends? The normal level, the acceptable level, is no more than four, the radon level is 44 in that vault. I work in that, and we have two town clerks who have battled cancer in my lifetime, I'm probably sitting duck myself. We have a fire department right now that needs air packs that are gonna cost $50,000, and they need, they need them, they're past their prime. We have a lift that is 20 years past its prime, at least 10 if you stretch it, I've been trapped in it, Pat Freeman's been trapped in it, a grandmother and a baby has been, have you been trapped in, Greg Woodchurch has been trapped in it.
So, can you step to the front, I think it's, there's.
Oh, sorry, we have a, we have duct tape over the windows in town hall, we, our heating costs are crazy in town hall, we cannot meet here, we cannot meet in town hall, because it's not only just crowded, but if you flush the toilet more than eight times a day, it will overflow, just ask the people who threw a wedding shower, a bridal shower two weekends ago. We've got big, big costs coming down the pike, and partly it's been because the Select Board has tried to keep these increases down, and partly it's because, you know, we, no one wants to deliver bad news, everybody wants to come to the voters and say we have a 2.5% increase, we have a slew of deferred maintenance, and I am sorry, but this is something we're gonna have to consider with the $73,000 of special articles that are coming on top of this 11% budget increase. I know these are all unpopular positions, I don't wanna take it, I love the library, I'm an author, I've written 17 books, I actually get paid by the library, and my final point is this, state payments, which are breaks on your property taxes, only apply to people's homestead education bill, everything you vote here today is applied across the board to everyone, there is no state payment on town taxes. A lot of people can't be here because they're working, and you're sticking them with a bill, so, we've all got a pony up, understand we got big bills coming up, and we gotta do some budget tightening, and I'm sorry about it, I say support this budget because the roads are a mess, but then, when you get to the special articles, think long and hard about our pet projects, which we all love, those are the hardest ones to cut. Thanks.
Yeah, Ray again, hey, I'm gonna reiterate what I was saying before, in one sense of the way, and some of it, like Matt said, it's management, because there's certain roads on this, I'm not gonna say what roads they were, but I've driven over them, and there was places that, where the ditch line was filled up, water was running out into the road, and all it would have taken for an operator, one of the road crew, to run a backhoe, down that road, stop five minutes, pull some dirt into the edge of the road to get the water to run. to run back into the ditch where it should have been in the first place, and that would have been taken care of. But it wasn't done, wasn't done. Several weeks went by, it wasn't done. Then we had a heavy rain, guess what? The road washed out. Well, that cost us more money because we had to put more gravel back into the edge of the road because we lost the road. Those are some of the things that need to be taken care of, but if our road crew is working on these mud mitigations, and come on, people, I've been in this town, born, raised here, almost 70 years. I grew up in mud season. You're going to have mud season. So you deal with it for a month or so. The rest of the year is not bad at all. So you want to take care of some of these mud problems, but don't try to do it on one hitch. Back off on spending this money and do it smaller amounts instead. And do the road maintenance. Our town is suffering because of these jobs that you're trying to get done, and our roads are not being taken care of. And I'll come right back to the grading problem. And yes, I had a road crew person tell me that, well, it's nice to have that four-day work week because we put in so many hours in the winter time that this is one of the perks for us, putting in so many hours. You didn't get compensated for time and a half while you were out there doing that plowing and sanding, that you need to have this extra time, these three-day work vacations, so you're only working four days a week. And like I said before, if it rains on one day, you can't grade. But how many Fridays out of the summer, that that Friday was a good day, that grader should have been out there working? And when these road crews are all doing these other jobs, that grader should be out every single day that it is not grading and grading our roads. And our roads are suffering from it because of it now. And some of these side roads that are, you know, two or three houses on it, they're going in and grading a road. A road that I was working on, I'm not saying what road it was either. Perfectly fine. If it isn't broke, don't fix it. Well, that road got regraded, and I was told, well, there's taxpayers on that road, they deserve some of that tax money back. That's why we graded the road. When we had other main roads that should have been graded because we got potholes that are a foot and a half deep, people are losing their tires in them. Come on, folks, put the money where it really needs to be done into.
Thank you. We are discussing Article 7, just to remind them. This is the 2020-2021 budget. Other comments, discussion from folks who haven't spoken yet? Right here.
My name's Gordon Grunder. We made a big change in the way that the road crew worked on the town roads, whatever that was, five years ago. When I go up East Hill Road in mud season now, I don't have to tow other people out. I don't have to worry I'm going to lose my Subaru and never see it again in a mud hole. Portal Road, you know, they did a lot of work there. It was really expensive, and they did a great job. I understand there's other parts of town, and there's more maintenance that needs to be done, the ditching work needs to be done, but I really want to hand it to the road crew. I really like the big projects they've done, and, you know, we've had big storms, and taking cheap shots at the 10 hours a day they work for four days a week, that just doesn't seem right. That's my comment. Thank you.
Other comments, discussion on the budget? Over here? Oops, that's all right.
I'll just shout. So the issues that Sarah Merriman raised are concerning. The issues that Sarah Merriman raised are concerning. We shouldn't have town employees working in an unsafe environment. We shouldn't have an elevator that people get stuck in. We should have a town hall that is secure and the fire department as well. And so I just wanted to pose a question because honestly, I don't know the details of the budget, and I don't know what long-range planning might look like. So I wanted to pose a question to the Select Board if I could, and that is, do you have any thoughts about how we deal with these longer-term issues? Are you thinking that next year there will be capital items added to the budget? Is there a plan to do them in chunks? Any light you can shed on this would be helpful.
So we have spent quite a bit of time this year, and Sarah's comments are a result of that work, trying to figure out how to work on some of these issues. The other issue which Sarah didn't mention, which is scariness in the face, is five years ago, Steve, we did the work on the grader?
Yes.
Five years ago, we made the decision not to purchase a new grader, to essentially rebuild the grader we have and make it last another five years. That worked. We saved some real money. But now we have a grader that really needs to be replaced. That's in the neighborhood of a quarter of a million dollars. That's like 25% of our budget, and we're not going to pay for it in one year. We'd pay for it over 10 years or maybe more. But it's true. We've got a lot of big things staring us in the face, and we're trying to figure out how to, A, prioritize them, and B, do them in the most cost-effective way. Should we build a new little town clerk's office, maybe in the center here, maybe where the old town garage is? Who knows? But build a small building with a proper vault, a small vault. We don't need a meeting room anymore because we're having our meetings at the school, and sell the old town hall. Maybe we should do that. We had an engineering study done on the town garage, thinking that it would make sense. The heating cost at the town garage is horrendous. It's a temporary building, it's poorly insulated, et cetera, et cetera. Well, the engineering report came back and said exactly what Sarah said. The structure of that garage won't support snow, so you have to have limited insulation so the heat melts the snow, otherwise the building collapses. Well, that's a fine how-do-you-do. How do we deal with that? Well, probably what we need is a new town garage. Who knows what that might cost? Believe me, we're trying to parse things out and work on them, but we've got some major challenges ahead in all these areas. And we just deferred because of the items that we're talking about tonight. We made the decision to do some additional repairs on the grader and make that grader last one more year so that we wouldn't be asking for a potentially 20% increase because we were going to have a late payment on a grader. So we're doing the best we can, folks. We welcome, believe me, we welcome your input. Any thoughts or ideas any of you have on any of these subjects? We'd love to have you come to a town meeting, a town meeting, excuse me, a Select Board meeting and talk to us because we're struggling, because we can see a lot of challenges on the horizon.
Other comments? August, right in the corner.
What comes to mind, and I wonder if you...
August Burns?
August Burns. If you consider it as a capital campaign for infrastructure. You know, every time we're in town meeting, we acknowledge and recognize that many people in town are on limited incomes and many people are not. And, you know, we're a community, and, you know, if we can't raise taxes so that, because it hurts some people, is there another way to do it? And, you know, I would love to contribute to a town clerk's office where the town clerk lives, has long life. I think there's other people who might, I don't know, it's just my thought that it's like, oh, we should do this.
Other comments about the budget? Yes. Oh, no, sorry, I saw Sarah first. Sarah?
Hi, Sarah Seidman. I'd just like to propose to the Select Board that they come back to us next year with some kind of a long-term plan, just like we would do if we have all these expenses. Maybe we can't do mud mitigation every year. Maybe we have to start a five-year plan for our town as a whole to address these problems. You can't come back to us every year and say, well, this year is a big year, but this year we'll do two. You know, we need to have some kind of long-range planning that will allow us to address significant. We have such a wonderful town. We don't want to let it fall into disrepair.
Sarah, we couldn't agree with you more. We're trying to get the information we need to do that kind of long-term plan. That's what's brought up this whole discussion, and we've been working on it all year. We've got more work to do. But yes, the idea is to prioritize so we can't do all these things at once. We've got to figure out the most important ones and knock them off one at a time.
Amy. Guys are going to have to duke it out. Go, 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 go. Awesome. Yeah, right there.
Hi. So I'm going to echo Sarah's sentiment. Sarah, our town clerk. I'm Amy Whitehorn. I'm also one of your listers. Hopefully, some of you voted for me to do the job again. And there was a question raised earlier, I think by someone over here, about the lister budget. What you all may not know is that you've been working with basically two out of three listers for the last couple of years. One of our listers lives out of state for about half a year, so he isn't around. And he's great, Dick at Alderman, everybody who's probably familiar with him. And certainly, we respect and are glad to have him as one of our listers. But that lifting is falling back to Eric Young and to me, who are responsible for the grand list. And frankly, that means your house value. Nobody likes it when we come around. But the grand list is basically how the Select Board figures out how much they have to spread the needs across our town. Nobody likes to see us come around, and people come in and they always say, oh, my house is not nearly worth as much as you think it is. And yet, people are making all sorts of improvements and changes and things that may or may not even require a permit, that are improving your efficiency at home and making all sorts of adjustments in ways so you can live within your own means. We can't do that here in town. That's what you just were hearing from Sarah and from Peter, from talking about the buildings that we have. We are not in a situation in our town where we can make efficiency improvements because our buildings are in such poor condition, it would be literally flushing money down the toilet. And I say that because it is eight times. The ninth time, you're in trouble, at the town hall, that is. So two things. One, if you're making improvements to your home, raise your hand and let us know so that you can pay your fair share right alongside your neighbors. Because nobody wants their taxes to go up, and yet, we all are not living in the same house that we lived in, you know, probably 10 years ago. You've at least maybe, I don't know, done something, a roof. The other thing is, there are very few of us in town in this room. We have a lot more neighbors who aren't able to come to this meeting every year to vote on this budget. And to that end, it has been asked of the Select Board in years past that our budget be moved to the ballot so that every person in town who's affected by that budget has an equal chance. And I mean that equal underscore because there are people who literally cannot be here for certain reasons, unlike those of us who are able to be here, to decide whether or not we spend our tax money in this town in the way in which we're spending it. So, sorry, I'm getting a little nervous. So to that end, I wish that you would think about that because at some point, it really needs to come before us, the reality that our town, although we're all community and neighbors, is big enough at this point and has a diverse enough population that we cannot decide our budget with just, I don't know, a couple hundred of us in the room? And not all of us are voters. Well, I'm a voter, but not everybody here is a voter. So I guess that's it for now. But the lister budget went up because there's a lot more work to do than there used to be. And Eric and Dick and I have not been billing the town for much of the time for the last few years. And we were asked to give real numbers, so we did. And that's still very conservative, and we rarely actually spend what we say we're going to.
Thanks. Right over here.
Hi, Heidi Lucas here. I agree with everything you just said, and I think it's time for a reality check from everybody in this room, that there's a lot of stuff going on in Middlesex that needs help. And while everyone wants to help everybody outside of our community, it's about time we say no to everybody else and say yes to Middlesex because there soon isn't going to be a town for everybody to live in. So the special articles shouldn't be in there. We should be focusing on our own budget. And yes, I'm going to use the word, it's time to get selfish.
Other discussion or questions or comments about the budget?
In terms of the kind of long-term planning, so when Rumney was talking about doing a big improvement, it was kind of a multi-year process, and people were invited to all kinds of meetings throughout several years. So I think I would recommend the same kind of a thing here if we're really looking at a number of big budget items. Don't just wait till next town meeting to present a plan and have people react to that. Do something throughout the next year so that people can actually participate. And then people can actually, people who can't come to town meeting can actually be participating in that planning process.
Other questions or comments about Article 7? Give him some microphone. Yes, thank you.
Vic Dwyer again. I don't really want to hold your feet to the fire here, but I don't understand why if we're talking about plans, we're talking about money, but we don't know where we're going to spend it. We don't know who we're going to hire. And the reason I say that is because we have a town, we have a plan for doing roads, but we don't stick to that. Some of our problems that you ran into is because we did notch road instead of staying with our plan. Can you explain to me why we did notch road instead of sticking with our plan? Was there any particular big deal over there?
No, I can't answer that question like that.
I mean, I can tell you what the rumors are in town, but I don't want to do that. And now, somebody said that you shouldn't be saying anything about working 10 hours. Last year, we were working Sundays, and we were taking Fridays off. It doesn't seem, you know, I'm not trying to beat you guys up, I really am not, but I think we've got to think more on what we're doing. A couple of years ago, we took the Class 4 section over on McCullough Hill Road, a big deal. We were going to make a town, we were going to make a Class 3. We didn't do anything to it. So now we're over there fixing it. We should be fixing our main arteries, like East Hill and Center Road. I don't even think you can get an ambulance up some of those roads, some of those portions of East Hill in the springtime. If you want to put some money into that mud mitigation, let's forget about McCullough Hill Road this summer and focus on our main arteries. I would gladly, I mean, I own everything that was on the right side of that, and I'd gladly say, forget it. We can get along on McCullough Hill Road, and you fix up the main arteries. Thank you.
Any comments from the Select Board on that before we move on? Other comments or questions about Article 7, the budget?
Hi, I'm Becca Mandell, and I'm a lifelong Middlesex resident. And I just have a question about procedure, I guess. It seems like a lot of the comments that we've been getting during the course of this conversation are really about management of the folks who work for us as a community. So I'm wondering, they seem separate from the money. And so I'm wondering, if folks have concerns or questions about how our town's money is being managed, how can they address those in a forum where those decisions are being made? Because I don't actually think we're making any decisions about how the roads get maintained here tonight. We're just deciding whether we're going to give the extra 40 grand for those, for that excavator and the person who's going to operate. for those, for the excavator and the person who's gonna operate it. So, we're sort of saying, we are giving, we're making that decision and then the decision about how that is gonna happen, I think, is getting made later. So I'm curious about when that decision's getting made and how we would know so that folks who, who feel this is really important to weigh in on can have a chance to weigh in and then sort of move on from that and...
Right. So Becca, that's a great point. And Becca is asking, I think, the select board, when would be an appropriate time to have additional conversation about the sort of management questions as opposed to spending, which is what we're confined to talking about right here?
Got it. So, we have select board meetings twice a month. We love people to come to our meetings. We welcome people to come to our meetings. We respect and are polite to people who come to our meetings. There are no bad questions or no bad suggestions. We truly welcome input. The warnings for those meetings are posted on the town website. They're posted at the school. They're posted at the town hall. So you can see what's on our schedule that we're gonna discuss. But if you have an item, anyone here has an item that they'd like to discuss, whether it's the, you know, the four-day work week in the summer or the roads we're working on or the plan for the town hall or whatever it is, contact Sarah and she will put you on the agenda. And we welcome your input. Don't think you're limited to just what appears on the town warning. Might not be the next meeting, might be in three weeks, depending on how busy we are. But we welcome input from everybody and anybody, anytime. And if you don't have time to come down and meet with us, send us an email, send us a letter. We'll, we'll respond to you. We welcome the input. We truly do. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy. Microphone right there.
Hi, Wendy Frendlich. I am just wondering, you didn't mention Front Porch Forum as a way to announce the select board meetings and the agenda. And for somebody who doesn't look at the town website or necessarily go down to, you know, the clerk's office, it would be great if you announced it on Front Porch Forum with a little agenda and a couple days or a week's notice or something.
So I don't, I don't know the answer to the question of whether Front Porch Forum will accept that as a post. We can, we can look into it.
I don't know why not.
I mean, all, all I'm saying is between, you know, you can, you can call the town clerk's office. She can email it to you, whatever.
For somebody like me who's got 10,000 organizational things going on, I would not think about doing anything like that unless it came right up to my nose. So Front Porch Forum, I do look at every day.
Well, we can, we can agree to look into that. I have no problem doing that. Our concern with Front Porch Forum is that a lot of folks don't get Front Porch Forum. So that isn't the answer either. But we want to communicate with people. Excuse me. We want to communicate with people the best way we can. So, I'll promise you, we'll look into that and see if we can do it. I would imagine we could put a notice of the meeting on Front Porch Forum saying, remember, there's a select board meeting next Tuesday night at 5:00. Whether we can put the agenda on there would be my question.
You can link to the website.
The town meeting was put up too.
Sure they do. I've seen them. Yep, 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 yep.
Other folks who haven't spoken yet, yes. Microphone right there.
So, my name's Randy Drury.
Randy, a little to the microphone. Thank you.
So, I just have some questions about Randy Drury. I'm looking at a couple line items here on the budget. Road gravel, roadside mowing. Kind of ties into a lot of the conversation that's been happening so far. Looking at 182, or 181% increase in road gravel. Almost a 90% decrease in roadside mowing. Wondering if you can talk on that? And then I also have a follow-up. Wondering whether or not we have anybody looking into whether there are pools of money to assist with any of the ditching or, you know, seeding or any of that kind of stuff through, whether it's state or some sort of organization.
Who would like to take that question from the select board?
Well, whilst, whilst Steve's looking for that, I'll just, I'll just make one comment. We keep our eyes open all the time for opportunities to get grants to help us with some of these issues. And we've been very successful in, in getting grants. So we work on that all the time. If there's money out there, we go ahead.
So on, on that, the increase that you're talking about, it's, it's like one of the things that Peter had mentioned earlier. It is a, a large increase on a percentage, but as far as dollar value, it, it, it's, it's not that much.
Quick, the microphone? Thanks.
So we talk about, I don't know, it's just a little bit of money. Well, it's a little bit of money here. It's a little bit of money there. You start adding that up and the folks that are on fixed incomes and just barely scraping by, it makes a huge difference.
There's a hand right here. Coming around the back.
Hi, my name is Ronald Brown and I live down on Route 2. It's not very muddy down there, right on Route 2. But coming up here, I noticed it. Anyways. I just wanted to wonder, I haven't been here because usually during the winters where, where it's a lot warmer than this. But now we're up here because they built a new house. But anyway, who come up with the idea of the five, the 10-hour days? Is that, the workers wanted that or did the bosses want that or what? I know that I used to work central guard, traffic shop, doing signs all over the state. And it worked great for a while in the summer because we would leave here and go to Brattleboro or Bennington or, you know. So if you worked 10 days, you could get a lot more done, you know, that way. But right here, I don't know, the 10 days, 10 hours seems like, I don't know what would be accomplished. I think you'd have a lot more time to come back to the shop and clean your trucks, as far as I'm concerned. That's, thank you.
If you want to respond to that, you can, or you can refer it to as likely.
Yeah, I, I believe that we do get our value out of those 10-hour days. And, and I've been in construction for a long time myself. But the workers did come to us originally to go with a four-day week. And there's a lot of towns out there that do the four-day weeks. And on the question of the grading, that comment about the grading on a Friday, that's absolutely true. There's some times when we should be out there grading because the road crew isn't working. However, Paul and I have discussed that very item. And at the last part of this past summer, we were grading on weekends even because of the weather. So we were trying to adapt our hours to do that.
Vic Dwyer. So, on those weekends, Steve, do those, are those guys, are we getting charged time and a half for those hours or is that straight time?
No. What we were trying to do is to work that out so we could just do straight time. I did authorize Paul to do time and a half if we had to, to, to get the roads graded. But we, we are trying to do it so that it's just straight time.
Okay. So, just real quick, this lady over here, I think, had commented something about, you know, we're having all this discussion about 10-hour workdays and, you know, how things are done in this town or whatnot. And, and, you know, we should really allocate a special time to talk about that somewhere. Well, you know, this is town meeting and I understand there's a lot to do and to talk about. But the reason we're bringing this up and to talk about it is if, if things were managed in a different manner, I think is where we're coming from, perhaps we wouldn't have to spend the $40,000 or $50,000 extra this year to get caught up on something that maybe we wouldn't have had to get caught up on. That's, that's merely the reason we're having this discussion.
There was a hand back here. Yes.
Hey, everybody. I'm Eric Silvers. I haven't been to any town meetings. I've always been away. And I'm, I'm happy to be here and I don't want to miss anymore. I love the road crew. You guys rock, man. You rock. And I would work 10-hour days, four days a week, if I had a choice. Hell, yeah, man. I would appreciate you picking up the stuff on Macy Road, all that drainage stuff on the side that you pulled out and picked up. I would appreciate that. But, um, you guys did a great job on Macy Road, man. It's a little bit narrow. But hell, the whole road, man, was like gone. And you put it back pretty fast. So I appreciate that.
They didn't do it. They subbed that out to DuBois. That wasn't our town to do that.
All right. Well, you made the choice to sub it out. All right. Thank you for the clarification. Whatever, man. That Macy Road got put back together pretty quick.
Thank you, DuBois.
And I appreciate that. Appreciate that a lot. And, you know, if we're complaining about how much money the road crew's spending and we're complaining about the potholes, that doesn't make much sense to me. So either we have good roads and we pay for them or we have potholes and we drive slower. Drive slower. On Macy Road, for sure. Drive slower on Macy Road. And if you don't live on Macy Road, don't drive on Macy Road, man. Go on West Hill. Please. Because there's a lot of people who are driving fast on Macy Road and we walk on Macy Road, man, and I almost got hit. Okay. Select board, thank you for your work. Thank you for your work. Appreciate that. I have some ideas, but I'll save them for later.
Okay, great. And over here? In the corner. Oh, actually, I was calling on Susan Warren right behind you, Eric, earlier. Sorry.
Hi, I'm Susan Warren. And I, I, you know, I appreciate all the work that the road crew is doing. And I, I, you know, I would ordinarily support a increase in, you know, to catch up. But I'm, but what I'm hearing is that there's an awful lot of problems that may require 40, 50, a hundred thousand dollars, maybe a quarter of a million for the greater that are, you know, impending. And I'm wondering if we could have a special meeting of some kind to get more input on, you know, from us because it's hard for us to come to the town meeting and hear about one thing that's, needs money and then knowing there's a lot of other things and not knowing how it's gonna get balanced out in the future and how we're gonna plan ahead for some of these big expenses. So I, I don't know if it's possible to kind of table the increase in the road budget for the time being until we can sort of, as a group, hear more about the impending decisions instead of having them kind of come at us, you know, year by year in the budget, which is, you know, it's kind of, it's stressful for everyone to think about. And I appreciate Sarah's information that she provided about a lot of problems that most of us didn't know were impending.
So which, which dollar amount are you proposing?
I guess I, I don't really know. I need help with, with what to...
What to propose. Okay. Yes.
Sue, I would just make one, one comment to you. And, and that is, I understand it's, it's difficult for people to keep track of what's going on at select board meetings. And it's also difficult to come out in the evening at 10 select board meetings. But in the fall, every year, we have budget hearings where we go department by department. We have budgets presented. We discuss the items that we need to spend our money on. And that would be the perfect time to come to a select board meeting or write us a letter or participate in some way. We will get it on Front Porch Forum, so that'll, that'll help people remember. But that's how the process works. We don't, we spend a lot of time putting these numbers together. And we welcome your input.
And I'll just add that there's also what's called the Budget Committee. So it's aside from the select board who comes to these meetings as well. So these are, are they elected budget? Two of them, yes. It's an elected position, yeah. So two of them are... Yeah, that, yeah, we often appoint them because nobody votes or there's not enough people on the ballot. So you could be on the Budget Committee, which would be helpful because I know we have a couple of vacancies. But the Budget Committee, and again, we, as Sarah mentioned, all of these things, we've talked about, I mean, we struggle over these at every meeting. And our, you know, this $40,000, we had a lot of conversation about it. And our Budget Committee said that they fully supported that increase and that if we, as a select board, had said that, well, we don't really feel comfortable doing this, they would have disagreed with us. So just know that it's not just us up here making these decisions, but there's a full committee that supports us along the way.
And Susan, it wasn't clear to me, I, if you'd like to make a motion, I think that the proper motion would be to amend the budget to take it down by some dollar amount. You'd have to pick the dollar amount. We'd have to vote on that amendment. And then the select board would need to re-warn a special meeting about that, that dollar amount. And whether they would, and I'm not sure if you want to take it to that extent or if you're happy with the response from the select board about how the budget process works. Clarifying question? Just a second. Budget. Yeah. Point of information from John Equilio. Just, yeah, grab a microphone.
Just a point of, just a point, just a little point, just a point.
Just a point of clarification, though. Can the select board answer, is the, do we equate the $40,000 to ditch, ditching and, and the mud mitigation? Because I think that, that is a particular...
The $40,000 is just for ditching.
Just for ditching, okay. So I think if, if there is gonna be an amendment, I think we need to know that if you're looking at that $40,000, whether that is answering the question about management on the roads. You know, is that $40,000 that we would amend, take out, addressing the issue that people have about roads?
There is no proposed amendment on the floor at this time. We're just kind of skirting around. Microphone coming at you. Vic Dwyer.
I really think you should let this gentleman talk. He's been trying to talk.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dick. But turn on the mic if you can.
Vic Dwyer. I think that we should...
The mic, the mic is off.
How's that? Technology. Would we, would it be fair to say we'd take, to amend the, the budget to 3% over last year's budget? Would that take care of the, instead of 11%, have it 3%?
It's, it's an allowable...
I mean, you've got some, you, you have some increases that you've, that you don't have much control over. So I wouldn't say you'd want to do it flat. Usually, usually you run around 3%, don't you? So Vic, the, the answer is yes, you can? Yeah. Okay. We would much prefer that if you want to reduce the budget, you say, I want to adjust this particular line item in the budget. Like, for instance, take out that $40,000 special thing rather than say, you know, we'll leave it up to you guys. You, you spend the money, but we're only gonna give you...
Well, ultimately, you do anyways. If, no matter what the budget is, you can spend it anywhere you want. You know you can.
Not really. We try very hard to stick to that.
But no, I, isn't 11%? Isn't that like a hundred thousand?
I'm sorry?
Isn't the 11% increase a hundred thousand dollars?
Roughly, yes.
Okay, so we'll cut the budget by a hundred thousand dollars?
Get ready.
Yeah.
So...
Can I make that amendment?
Yes, you can make a, a motion, yes. The motion on the floor is an amendment made by Vic Dwyer to cut the budget, Article VII, by $100,000? Right. Is there a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded to cut the budget by $100,000. Is there discussion on the amendment?
The question was asked, is it fair? And Paul Zabriski, I posit it is not fair to the select board to give them a blanket cut and... cut and ask them to make all the nasty decisions as opposed to functioning as a town meeting and us taking responsibility for where are we spending and where are we cutting. We have a budget presented to us. If we want to take a hundred thousand dollars out, I think it's incumbent on us to decide where those hundred thousand dollars come from. Who loses in this?
Other comments on the amendment? And, sorry, Vic, the person next to you, did you say Hannah Sander? About somewhere. Okay. Back here?
Hi, I'm Jim Covino. I just have an idea. When there's a state...
Hold the microphone right up.
Oh. When there's a state problem, the governor will call a national disaster, and the federal government will bail out the state. We all pay state taxes, so why can't, when we have a disaster in the town, why can't the state government have, you can call it a disaster area, and the state can bail us out? I mean, because it's going to get worse. Global warming, we're going to get more of this weather, and we can't afford it.
There, yeah, so do you want to, I know there's mention of getting state funding in the town report.
The answer is they do. There are grants available. We did, what was the amount of that grant? We did get a seventy-two thousand dollar grant for some of this repair work that we had to do after these storms. So yes, there is money. We go after any of that money that's available. We don't always get it, but we go after it.
The question on the floor is to amend the budget by reducing it by a hundred thousand dollars. Dorinda, yes. Microphone right here, she's...
Hi, Dorinda Corral. I just want to say that I think we've been talking about taking care of our Middlesex people, and I think we're overlooking the fact that we have seventy-three thousand dollars in special articles, which the majority is not going to help our town, and yet we're looking to cut forty thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars from our budget. I work very closely on the budget. There's some items you just can't cut. They're mandated hours or something that has to be done, but I think we need to be looking further down where we can make other cuts without hurting our town.
Where does the treasure? Other comments on the amendment proposal to cut the budget by a hundred thousand dollars? You ready for the question? Oh, okay, yes, Elliot?
I'm just wondering if somebody from the Select Board can, if possible, can explain to us what the impact would be of taking that money out of the budget? If you can project where you would be making cuts and how our lives would be changed.
Ten percent of the stuff that we pay for, we won't have that money, so we're going to have to find it somehow. I mean, I don't have any, I don't have any, is it going to come out of employee pay raises? Is it going to come out of the forty thousand dollars for the extra work on the roads that a lot of people were supporting and asking us to do? It's going to have to come out of everywhere. That's a big chunk of money. That's ten percent, more than, almost ten percent of our budget.
Other discussion? You ready for the question? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment to cut the budget by one hundred thousand dollars, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
The noes appear to have it? The noes do have it? And the amendment fails? We are back to Article Seven as proposed, the 2020-2021 budget. Your name? Sorry, your name again? Is there a second to call a question? Jeff Kuntz. It's been moved and seconded to call the question. That's non-debatable. So this is a question of whether we want to stop talking or not. If you would like to stop talking and just vote on the budget, then vote yes. So all those in favor of calling the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay, so we have just called the question, and we are ready for Article Seven. Article Seven, to vote a fiscal year 2020-2021 budget of one million, three hundred twenty-three thousand, eight hundred sixty-seven dollars to meet the expenses and liabilities of the town, and authorize the Select Board to set a tax rate sufficient to provide the same. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Noes were heard. The ayes have it. And Article Seven is passed. You have a budget, and we will move on to Article Nine, but before we do, I would like to take a sixty-second stretch break. Sixty seconds, I mean it. Touch your toes. Come on back, folks. Yeah, you can come right up here if you want to, Marek. Okay, we're reconvening, and Marek Gillis has a comment.
Hello, everybody. Actually, it's not really a comment, but I thought this might be a nice time to recognize one of our town people who is gracing the cover again for the second time with her beautiful artwork, and her name is Ruth Pope, and she, and she's walking in. Ruth, Ruth, I'm recognizing you again for your beautiful cover. That's it, thanks. John Puleo, would you like to say something about this?
Get out, come on, come on.
Hello, hi. I really liked the words that the kids say in the beginning about us being civil and remembering that we're all neighbors, and I thought that that was a good conversation that we just had, and I would invite all of you to stay after town meeting and share a meal together. The proceeds will benefit the Middlesex Fire Department, and it's spaghetti with meat sauce and pesto, and I believe it's eight dollars, and Susan Warren made some white rolls that are quite delicious. So I hope you will all join us and sit with your neighbors and have a nice conversation.
Okay, great. John Puleo.
Thanks. Just as an afterthought to the last discussion, I heard a lot of things from the audience about looking ahead and planning, but I didn't get a sense, with all due respect, and as civilly as I can bring this up, with all the hard work that the Select Board does, I think there's a little tone deafness here. I heard from many quarters here that people are looking for a process. They're looking for a commitment to a plan for the future. I think people were quite shocked about some of the things that Sarah mentioned and about the things we know that exist in town, but I'm not hearing from the Select Board that you heard that, and I don't know what that would take, some commitment. It's all well and good to say, we have these meetings, come on down, and I respect that, and people should participate, but I think we've reached a critical point in this community where we need leadership, and I think it should come from others in town, but as well, and most importantly, from the Select Board, to say, we heard you loudly and clearly tonight, and we would like to engage in some kind of process, a five-year plan, whatever it is, that would engage the public in ways. I think we have talented people in town that would help mediate that, organize it. We did a wonderful process over the past few years to see what does this town want and need. Can we come back to the drawing board and look at a long-term process where we can address, uncover the needs, prioritize, and then over the next five or eight years, prioritize how we add things to our budget to address what I think are some critical issues in town?
Okay, thanks, John.
So is the Select Board willing on some level to commit to looking into that or to a process like that?
Yes, we are, whether it's creating a building committee or whatever the process would be. We want community involvement, yes.
We've been wanting to set up a capital budget for quite a long time, and the fact of the matter is that we just haven't had really the ability or the fortitude to go out and get some estimates on these things, because if we're talking about a new town hall, we're talking about, about what we paid for, for the fire department. If you remember that, that was almost a million dollars, and it's more now, and it was funded over a fairly long period of time. If you look at, under the debt service, we're still paying that off. And then you start adding the other things we need. I mean, each of these is a major, major capital expense, so I think for myself, I've wanted to do a capital budget, just like we do the five-year plan for the roads, because you guys deserve to know what it is we have in our mind, especially when it's so expensive. But I think for myself, it's been a little frightening to think about the major expenses, because if you look under the debt service, we have to have the trucks, we have to have the excavators, we have to have all of that, and they are major, major expenses. Sarah has been the person who's pushed the most for a new town office, but she is the one, along with our assistant clerk, who's in there the most, and the radon exposure is phenomenal. But we really have to put our, from hearing what Sarah's kind of plea to the community, it gives us a new sense we ought to be getting those bids, and we ought to be doing more serious work. I, of course, wanted to use part of the fire station, but then you can't really be around the equipment and the ability of the fire department to respond to the need for the vehicles, but we hear you, and, you know, maybe we should put together a buildings committee, and we would welcome anybody to start coming to some public meetings and help us get some bids, get some ideas on how we can do it in the most economical way. So I support what Peter said. Don't know if any of the other people on the committee want to...
I support that, and I would totally welcome us, and I'm sure that will be the topic of our first meeting, is figuring out how we're going to present that to you guys.
I also agree.
Okay, in that case, we will move on to Article Nine. We will, without objection, pick that back up. This was the question of whether the town should authorize expenditures of up to eight thousand dollars to purchase two radar speed feedback signs to be installed on the north and south lanes of Vermont Route 12 in Putnamville, and the amendment failed, so it is as written. Is there discussion, further discussion on Article Nine? Yes.
We already did. We picked it back up again.
So I just want to, Amy Whitehorn, just want to remind everyone what Dorinda was just saying. On page forty-three, you can see the list, we have under special articles, including the one that we're talking about at the moment, seventy-three thousand, three hundred nineteen dollars that's outside our regular town operating budget. Every single one of these is for something that somebody considers to be crucial, important, maybe even essential, I don't know, pick your adjective. The bottom line is, do people support people having safer driveways and being able to get out of your driveway, or having people drive more slowly on our roads, which, by the way, if you slowed the heck down, you wouldn't have quite the washboards that we do? People tailgating to get to Rummy School in the morning, which happens to me, I get tailgated almost every time I'm headed into the town office by somebody who's zooming back and forth on shady rail, and Molly Supple. That's not helpful to our roads, and it doesn't make them safe, and a blinking sign, and I'll be all respect to, might get somebody's attention, but we also have in our budget funding for the sheriff's department to do more traffic control. Let's have them sit at Norton Road in a really conspicuous place. Slow the hell down, people, and maybe on the other side. And by the way, Culver Hill, you know, Liz mentioned at a Select Board meeting last year, and I've had this experience myself, of nearly being cream, trying to pull off Culver Hill onto Route 12, going toward Montpelier, turning right onto Culver Hill, people speeding up Route 12. There's need all over town for this, so maybe either we go back to the idea of some sort of portable board, so that the amendment maybe would be to use the monies in a different way, or we just, because we're talking about our own, this is Middlesex, right? Middlesex issue, Middlesex special issue, or we use monies that are already in the budget we just passed to do some more traffic control all around town.
Just to address the traffic control, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that it's not that there's money to do it, there is money to do it, I believe there's not enough staff for the sheriff, and they're not able to, like, meet the, they just don't have enough people to traffic, so they have a hard time doing the budget. It's not because they don't want to do it, or there's not enough money to do it. We could double the budget for speeding, but I don't believe there's, and maybe you know, because you're a state policeman, but there is a shortage of people to be doing this work.
Again, not speaking from a selfish...
Can you just state your name?
Yep, sorry, Bob Lucas. Yes, there are other resources out there, though. I mean, obviously, the sheriff's department is not the only, you know, crew in town that can go ahead and do speed enforcement. It's really what you're looking for. The state police do do it. You can contract with local towns. You know, other towns can go ahead and supplement our area if we want. It's all in what the Select Board wants to go ahead and approve, and obviously how they want to go and spend that money.
Thank you. Many of you have been coming to these meetings over the years, have heard this over and over and over again. We have in the past contracted with the state police, we've contracted with the sheriff. It's been the same story everywhere we go. They sign a contract, they commit to give us the hours, and then somehow they just aren't the people and the resources to fulfill the terms of the contract. So, you know, certainly we could start our own police force, have a bit, and I'm not volunteering. It's a real, this speeding thing has been an ongoing, annoying challenge, dangerous challenge for all of us in town.
Hi, I'm Brian Prendergast. We're here talking about money and taxes and all that, and I, I feel for some of the comments that people said, let's, you know, really bring our focus on to what Middlesex needs, and stop thinking about outside of Middlesex. This is partly about this issue about the radar, but it's also about where we're heading in this part of the meeting with all these special asks of two hundred fifty dollars and less. If you look at that list, almost every one of them, probably every one of them, serves Middlesex. So even if it says Waterbury under the title, and they're asking for two hundred fifty dollars, they're serving people in Middlesex. You know, I'm a mentor with Girls, Boys First, and so I want to especially, you know, just perk up for that, because that's serving kids right here in Middlesex. When it comes down to the dollars and cents, which is what we're voting here today, the average cost of all these amendments, again, are sixty-five dollars each. Now, I actually borrowed money to pay my tax this time, but, you know, sixty-five dollars, what do I have to do to cut back on my expenses so that I can support, help support every one of these special initiatives, including the radar, including Girls, Boys First, including Meals for Wheels? I mean, go down the list and just think about, okay, you take those stuff out of the budget, we're really hurting people on a daily, everyday, personal, one-to-one basis, and for sixty-five bucks, that's a pretty good deal, I think, for me.
So the article is eight thousand dollars to purchase two radar speed feedback signs. Other discussion? Sorry, here, the red sweater.
Hi, everyone. I'm Karen Gannett. I live in Putnamville on Route 12, just off Route 12, behind the bait shop. And after hearing the discussion on the budget, I'm guessing our sign may be going down. But I did want to say something about it because it's more of an education piece. So last summer, the three things that happened within two weeks, four things happened within two weeks. One, and we don't see, I do want to say, we don't see the state police and sheriffs on Route 12, very rarely. And we've talked with them. We've asked them to come, we've asked them to sit at Norton Road and see people flying through our community. And sometimes they come when we first call them and they'll come for a couple times and then they disappear again and we don't see them for a while. I work out of my home, so I know what happens on Route 12. And so last summer, and this is, I think, what really brought the issue home to us. One day, driving home from a meeting, there was a car flipped over in the middle of Route 12. Flipped over. Now, some of you may have had this on your road, I don't know, but I know that happened to us. And it was within feet of a woman whose house lives inches from Route 12, who has three children. And a week later, much to our surprise and horror, someone coming through Putnamville was eating their sandwich and flew into the guardrail, busted open his gas tank, and it was flowing all over Route 12. It took a really long time for those accidents for police and for fire to show up. We were out on the roads directing traffic because there was nobody there to help. And cars were flying through and, you know, as we're standing in the middle of the road, asking them to slow down. And the Cessna truck, and he came to one of the meetings we were at when we were talking about this issue, the guy driving the Cessna truck had stopped to take a turn on Norton Road or to turn around, and someone coming south on Route 12 came down the road, saw the Cessna truck in the middle of the road and went flying into the other lane to get around him on a blind curve. If someone had been coming the other way on that curve, they would have been creamed in a head-on collision. And there were skid marks all up the road from where this happened. So it's, you know, it's not just that they're going fast, it's that really bad things are really close to happening and some bad things have happened. I think it was just a miracle that a couple of those guys didn't die. Or the children on the road or where the bus turns around. Actually, the car flipped right where the bus turns around, right at Norton Road. So just to educate you on some of the things we're seeing happening there, it's not that it's just people are going fast, it's that we've had some really horrible things happen on that road and we're afraid someone's going to get really, really hurt. So at least you now know some of the things that are going on and whether it's an up or down vote, we hope that eventually we can do something to make people slow down. And we'll keep calling the sheriff's department and have them come and sit on Norton Road if they're willing to do it. And, you know, we'll try and take care of people on Route 12. Thank you.
Emily, did you have your hand up?
Yeah.
Emily Smith, I'd like to call a question.
Emily Smith is calling. The question, is there a second? Coons seconds. So we are going to be now voting on whether we want to stop talking about Article 9. So if you want to stop talking about Article 9, vote aye. All those in favor of calling the question on Article 9 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No?
No.
The ayes have it, noes were heard. So we're now going to vote on Article 9. Shall the town voters authorize expenditures of up to, of up to $8,000 to purchase two radar speed feedback signs to be installed on the north and south lanes of Vermont Route 12 in Putnamville? All those in favor of Article 9, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No?
No.
I'm going to go with a hand vote. So I'm going to ask... So we're going to do this by hand, a hand count. All those in favor of Article 9, please raise your hand. And keep them up. Okay. We're going to do it by standing. All those in favor, stand. Sorry about that. It's called a division and it's good exercise. Squat down. Squat down if you don't want to vote no. I mean, if you... So if you're in favor of Article 9, you should be standing right now. Thank you. You can be seated. All those opposed to Article 9, please stand. I think this is pretty clear. The ayes have it and Article 9 is passed.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have moved on to Article 10. Article 10, shall the town voters authorize expenditures of $600 for the Central Vermont Economic Development Corporation? Is there a motion on Article 10? Jeff Coons moves. Is there a second? Sorry? Eric Benedict seconds. Article 10 has been moved and seconded. $600 for the Central Vermont Economic Development Corporation. Any comments, discussion? Yes?
I'm putting on my Central Vermont Economic Development hat, not my Chairman of the Select Board hat. I've served on the board of Central Vermont Economic Development for years and years and years. Mary Skinner also served on that board. Central Vermont, the report's on page 67, you can read it, that gives a pretty good summary of what we do. It is a nonprofit regional organization that promotes business. So it's about, it's about jobs, it's about supporting small businesses. We do have a state grant which funds more, most of our budget. This is a small amount and we would appreciate your support. Thank you. And I'd be glad to try and answer any questions.
Dick Wire?
Dick Wire. Peter, you know what the total budget is for that? It is in the range of $800,000, I believe, Vic. Really? They have, they have two full-time employees. Okay. They don't earn $400 a company.
And just as a reminder, the articles that we're heading into are actually in order in your warning. So Article 10 is on page 67 and it goes from there. And also, while I'm interrupting myself, I will tell you that the polls close at 7 o'clock. So if you wanted to vote in the presidential primary, you can for a few more minutes. Yes?
John Krasinski, Pete, can you just tell us if there's any examples of this organization benefiting anybody in the town, town business, town organization?
We did Red Hen Bakery through them. So that's a pretty good one.
There have definitely been businesses in town that have been supported over the years. The Red Hen is the one that comes to mind immediately. But it is, it is businesses, you know, Curragh Coffee was supported by, by Central Vermont Economic Development. Bombadil was supported by Central Vermont Economic Development. Quite a few. Cabbage Cheese was supported by Central Vermont Economic Development. And although those businesses are not in middlesex, I'm sure we have people in those sects who work for those organizations. So it's about creating those jobs.
Additional comments or questions about Article 10? Ready for the question? Shall the town voters authorize expenditures of $600 for the Central Vermont Economic Development Corporation? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No?
No.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, noes were heard. And we will move on to Article 11. Shall the voters authorize expenditures of $4,050 to support Central Vermont Home, Health and Hospice? Do we have a motion on Article 11? Dave Shepherd moves. Is there a second? And say your name, Lisa. Lisa Carlson, second. You can put whoever you want, Sorshe. Article 11 has been moved and seconded. $4,050 to support Central Vermont Home, Health and Hospice. Is there discussion? No discussion. Oh, one hand, Wendy. Yes, okay, so microphone back here.
I am Wendy Frein. I have a background in gerontology, although it's not the work that I'm doing at the moment. And I have aging parents. I used to work up at Heaton Woods and I know firsthand how valuable it is to be able to die at home with support, whether it be at an assisted living or in your personal home. I can think of nothing more valuable than supporting an organization that lets us have that choice with support. And Home, Health and Hospice does that.
Thank you. Other discussion on Article 11? You ready for the question? Shall the voters authorize expenditures of $4,050 to support Central Vermont Home, Health and Hospice? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? The ayes have it. Article 12, shall the town voters authorize expenditures of $3,000 to support Community Connections? Is there a motion? Jeff Coons moves. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Article 12, $3,000 to support Community Connections. Is there a discussion? I think Chris Malone asked to speak on this. Yes, do you want to... Chris Malone is the Remney Community Connections site coordinator. He does not live in middlesex. Are there any objections to a non-voter addressing this question? No? Go for it. Okay.
All right, thank you very much. Community Connections at Remney is a before and after care program. More than half of the student body will attend at least once throughout the year. A lot of students use it very regularly. We provide programming in the afternoons with crafts. Right now, we've got snow shoeing, cooking, winter treats and things like that. And another thing that I really like about this program is that it brings DODI and Remney students together in the afternoon because DODI shares the program with us. So we're asking for $3,000. We do that every year and we're always grateful for the town's support. I'm happy to answer any questions about the program.
Any questions for Chris Malone? Ready for the question? Shall the town voters authorize expenditures of $3,000 to support Community Connections? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? The ayes have it. Article 12 passes. Article 13, shall the town voters authorize expenditures of $1,500 to support Girls and Boys First mentoring? Is there a motion on Article 13? Say your name, nice and loud.
Brian Prendergast.
Brian Prendergast. And is there a second on Article 13?
Second. Flora Lyle.
Flora Lyle, seconds. So Article 13, $1,500 to support Girls and Boys First mentoring, has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Jeff Coons. Microphone right over here.
It was a race.
All right. We've been giving $1,500 to this every year. Last year, the number of children involved were 10, I believe, and one was in Montpelier. That equates basically $150 per child. Community Connections doing over 100 for $3,000. The library, when that comes up, is usually about 50 a person. I would make an amendment that we reduce this to $500 this year.
All right, so the motion is to amend Article 13 to make it $500. Is there a second to that amendment? Nice and loud, your name.
Matt Wire.
Great, Matt Wire. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to change the $1,500 to $500. And I imagine Wendy is going to have something to say about that.
Girls and Boys First mentoring has been in the community for 21 years. We serve approximately 38 to 40 children a year. At present, there's nine from middlesex, two are on the wait list. We sent 11 of our kids to a week of sleepaway camp. Out of that 11, eight of them were from middlesex. I don't know if there's any parents of kids in our program in the room, but I know there's mentors and past mentors. Kids in our community in middlesex and across the board are seriously suffering from a variety of issues. And mentors provide an amazing amount of support. I've got kids from families in our community with no running water. I've got kids in our program that don't have stable housing. Although our program's not academic, kids who have mentors do better academically. They get along better with their families and their siblings. And I've got a lot of kids who are first in their generation going on to college or having help with their mentors with support after college into vocational or other programs. It's a lot of bang for the money that's invested. I don't know if there's anybody else in the room. We have minimum of two hours a week for one year, but the majority, well, I'd say about 65 to 75% of our mentor matches go from age eight and the mentors and the kids stay together all the way through high school and beyond. So it's a lot of bang for your buck.
Motion on the floor is to reduce Article 13 from 1,500 to 500. Additional comments? Brian?
I did mention before that I serve as a mentor with this organization. I mentored a 12-year-old for two years now, and I can tell you it's making a huge impact on my life and in this child's life. If you vote not to do this, if you vote not to spend an average of $2.50 a year, great, go buy some coffee.
The motion is to amend the Article 13 from 1,500 to 500. Is there further discussion? You ready for the question? No?
Lisa Carlson. Seems to me that, that if we can end up with students, with children who are likely, more likely to grow up and pay taxes and contribute to our economy, rather than ending up in a situation where they have difficulty finding a job or end up in prison or any number of other things that can happen to children who don't have the services that they need, if this small amount of money can make it more likely that we'll have taxpaying citizens in the future, it seems like money very well spent.
The motion on the floor is to amend this to Article, to $500. Is there any further discussion? Or are you ready for the question on the amendment? It's like you're ready for the question. Okay, so if you are in favor of amending Article 13 from $1,500 to $500, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Opposed, no?
No.
The nos have it, and the amendment fails. We are back to Article 13 as written. $1,500 to support Girls and Boys First Mentoring. You ready for the question? If you are. Shall the town voters authorize expenditures of $1,500 to support Girls and Boys First Mentoring? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
The ayes have it. Nos were heard. Article 13 passes. We are on to Article 14. Shall the town voters authorize expenditures of $29,801 to support the Kellogg Hubbard Library? Is there a motion? George Longenecker moves. Is there a second on Article 14? John Julio, second. Article 14 has been moved and seconded. Shall the town voters authorize expenditures of $29,801 to support the Kellogg Hubbard Library? Is there discussion? Sarah Seidman.
Hi, Sarah Seidman. I'm the new representative to the Kellogg Hubbard Library. I'd like to start just pleased with a little round of applause for John Playo, who was the representative before me for six years. Is that right, John? Thank you. Thank you, John. Thank you for your service. On page 71 in your report is the report on the Kellogg Hubbard Library. It's the second busiest library in the state. I want to give a little bit of news, which is that James O'Handlon, who's the owner of the Savoy Theater, is our new volunteer doing a storytime at the Remney School. So we are looking forward to having him up here telling stories to the kids. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions about the library for Sarah, or just comments on Article 14? Amy?
So last year, Amy Whitehorn. Last year, I recommended that we reduce this amount. If you'll look at your books again and how much it costs per household, it actually, we're paying per household for people who don't even have library cards. And we just had what felt a bit like a battle royal again over our own base budget. This is nearly $30,000. That's going to a private library in Montpelier that is not in Middlesex. And while there are lots of folks in Middlesex who probably use the services at Kellogg Hubbard Library, which is a great institution, it is a private institution with an endowment that has had a successful capital campaign recently to improve the library and put in a new elevator, kind of like what we need in Town Hall. And this is nearly $30,000 that could go toward our road problem, or our grader, or the mud, whatever. Town Hall! So bottom line, I know I'm like the least favorite person in town tonight anyway because I'm a Lister, so you all hate me anyway. But I just want some common sense in this room because we just heard about mentoring, which is free. Mentoring doesn't cost money. I've been a mentor for 15 years. I've never gotten reimbursement from the organization that I work with, and the kid that I work with, the kids that I've worked with, are amazing. So I'm not sure what the money's for, but that's okay. I didn't vote against it because they're kids in our community. But we're talking about kids in our community who get mentoring services and Community Connection services, and who don't have running water, whose parents are probably paying taxes in this town, who are probably not in this room tonight because they cannot likely afford to be. And we're voting on a budget, again, a very small percentage of us who live in this town, we're voting on a budget that affects our neighbors who aren't here because many of them can't be. So use some common sense, folks. If you want to support Kellogg Hubbard, then let's have an amount that equals a library card for each of our residents.
Are you trying to propose an amendment?
A Kellogg Hubbard library card for someone under 65, 16 to 65, four, is $40. A Kellogg Hubbard library card for someone 65 or over, $35. Let's do the math on our population. You want to make it so everybody can have one? Do it. Otherwise, be sensible. We're throwing money away when we don't have the money to take care of our own infrastructure.
Are you proposing an amendment?
Yes. Sure.
What dollar amount?
Actually, I would like to actually, I'll rescind that. I can't remember our total population people-wise. Does Sarah, or Marika, or Dorinda, or someone on the select board happen to know? So we can actually do the math.
1,700 broadly.
Okay.
1,800.
1,800.
That's $85,000.
So 8,000?
Eighty-five thousand.
Eighty-five hundred.
No, 85,000.
If you're trying to get a library card, it'd be 85,000.
For 16 to 65.
Only 16 to 65, not everyone.
I'm talking about infants. Anyway, come on, be reasonable. That's my point.
It's more. It's more than.
Okay, fine. So, bad idea. How about this? Let's put the money toward our own infrastructure. We need an elevator. Our Town Hall is not disability accessible, and it's making a lot of people sick. So let's fix our own house first.
Okay, so rather than proposing amendment, you're suggesting people vote no?
That's right. I would also, though, Susan, while I have the microphone, when we vote on this, I would like paper ballots on the vote.
So that's a proposal for a paper ballot on Article 14. There needs to be, and the way that works is that everybody would get a little square of paper, this is going to totally thrill Sarah now, even, a little square of paper, and you vote yes or no, and you go up and have your name checked off on the voter checklist, and then vote on that. And in order to have paper ballot, there needs to be seven people who would like a paper ballot. So before we call on you, I would like a show of hands of anyone who would like a paper ballot on Article 14. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Yes, we've got seven. All right. So we're going to have a paper ballot on Article 14. Further discussion on Article 14? Yes.
So, I know I brought this up last year, and let's get away from this. Our children stay there after school, especially those who have graduated from Remney and are now going to do 32, poor Montpelier. So it also serves as an after-school program for those who do not want to actually participate in a regular after-school program. It doesn't cost the parents any extra. It's a good place for children to stay after school, and it's a good place for children to meet up after school, and it's a safe place for them to meet up. All of this is provided out of the tax money at no extra cost, and it's a good place. It serves our community. Anyone can go there. Anyone can access the internet. Anyone can do any of the things that the library provides as long as they're a Middlesex member. So you just have to tell the librarian upfront, hey, I'd like to use the computer. They'll give you a pass to one of the computers, and you can use a computer. Or if you want to use the internet, you just have to log in. That's it. That's it. All you have to do. And the children, they're there. You can see them every afternoon after school. They're there for a few hours at the very least. It's why the library is open from a certain period of time to another period of time. Yes, some parents may not utilize the library as much as they do, and some adults may not utilize the library as much as they should, but the library exists so that you can utilize it. And it may be a private entity. It may have a very large endowment. The thing is, is that money can go very quickly. Remember that it is in a flood zone. The flood zone marker is even on the first floor. So if there is another flood, even if we do have flood mitigation abilities, it can receive a lot of damage, and that costs a lot of money when you have a historic building to take care of. So even if you think you have a lot of money, it can disappear very quickly if the circumstances arise. So do not discount the fact that it may seem like a lot of money we're contributing, but as they point out, it's only 3.2 percent. And we're, we use it. We do use it. It may not be counted by their numbers in this book, but we do use it, and they just may not be able to tell who uses it because they just leave the library books on the table.
So the question on the floor is $29,801 to support Kellogg Hubbard Library. Further discussion? Yes. Microphone right in the back.
Woman next to Katie.
Yep.
Hi, Jess Clark. I'm a school bus driver, and I happened to get this number from my fellow driver who stops at the Kellogg Hubbard Library with students who would otherwise be coming to Middlesex. And I know that there are up to five, five Middlesex children who get off at the Kellogg Hubbard Library some days. Now, if we don't give the Kellogg Hubbard Library $30,000 this year, those five students will still be able to get off and use the library's services. In fact, I did the math, and for the number of people in town that have library cards, we are paying more than $50 per library card for Middlesex people to use the library. This is more than a, than a out-of-town library card costs for someone who is not in the six town area of towns that support the library. So I would propose an amendment that we provide $15,000 to support the Kellogg Hubbard Library. Thank you.
Okay, and your name again, sorry.
Jessica Clark.
Jessica. I should be able to remember the Clark part. Jessica is proposing that we amend Article 14 from $29,801 to $15,000. Is there a second?
How do we do the paper ballot first?
No, the paper ballot is for the LT. She asked for that on the ultimate question.
Oh, at the very end.
At the very end, yeah. Once we're done amending it, if we amend it. So is there a second on, is that a second? Yeah. John Krasinski, second. Okay. So it's been moved and seconded to amend Article 14 from $29,801 to $15,000. Is there discussion on amending Article 14? Yes. Yep, sorry, somebody trying to get my. Oh, sorry. Okay. Right here, and then August will be next.
I'm Hugo Leitman. I live on Garand Hill Road. I'm in and out of the library multiple times a week. One reason is I get books that are designated for a preschool. I read them, and then I go to the preschool daycare center, and I read books once a week to the kids, three-year-olds. It's great fun. It's great, I love to see their excitement. But when I'm in the library, I see a lot of people, all ages, using computers, staying warm, attending programs. I think it's a tremendous cultural resource, a safe place to go, and I think it deserves our support. It's a real investment in emotional health, education, and I think we ought to support it wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Microphone in the back corner. And it's a race.
I'd like to just address.
August Burns.
August Burns. Every year, there's a discussion on the library, and for as long as I've been coming to town meeting, about 30 years, it's the question. I just wanted to know, I really, you know, I honor the argument that there's people who are on fixed incomes, can't afford taxes that are there. If taxes go up, it's a real burden. Is it, can you talk at all about tax relief in this town and how we can make it happen so that it's not a burden? So we don't starve our town in order to make sure that it isn't a burden on anyone? And yet, we create resources that everyone can have, including the town clerk's office, including an elevator so people can get where they're going, including a library? Because the Kellogg Hubbard Library is, all the libraries, I believe, in Vermont are private libraries, but it is our library. It's the library of our town. And people have a right to use it. That doesn't mean they must. But I just, it has, there has to be a way that, you know, every time we need something in this town, we can't do it because we don't want to burden people who can't afford it. We need to have some kind of a mechanism, and I think there is one. Is that right or not, for people who need tax relief to get it?
So August asks, I think her question is directed maybe to the select board.
It's directed to the select board.
Is there a property tax relief?
You know, what is the, what is the property tax relief mechanism so that this isn't a burden, and yet everyone can have the services of a full and rich community?
Is there such a date for the tax relief?
So the answer is for the town taxes, which is what we're talking about, the town budget. There's no mechanism that I know of where we can provide tax relief. Could we form some kind of a nonprofit Middlesex foundation to fundraise potentially and fund some of these things? I suppose we could. Nobody has ever, nobody's ever tried it that I know of. We have, the fire department has done fundraising over the years and raised a little money, but, you know, relatively small. What?
That's the school taxes, not the town taxes.
Right.
Wendy.
I just want to make the connection that we're struggling as a town and we're struggling as a state, a lot of because of what our federal priorities are doing with our tax dollars. I know that Girls and Boys First Mentoring had, I've been doing this job for almost 21 years. The first 12 years, we had government, federal government grants that helped support kids to have mentors, and I think it's just a connection that I think we all need to be aware of. Where are, where are our federal dollars going? Why, why don't they trickle down to the state? Why don't they trickle back down to our communities? I'm not going to give answers, but I just think it's a really important question to ask ourselves.
The motion on the floor is to amend Article 14 from $29,801 down to $15,000. Is there further discussion on the amendment?
Calling the question.
Calling the question on the amendment. Is there a second? Jeff Kuhn's second. So it's been moved and seconded to call the question. If you're done talking about this amendment, then you'll be voting yes on this one. All those in favor of calling the question on the amendment to Article 14, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
The ayes have it, and we have called the question. So we're now voting on whether to amend Article 14 from $29,801 down to $15,000. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
The nos appear to have it? The nos do have it? And the amendment is defeated. We are back to Article 14 as written, $29,801. Is there further discussion on Article 14? John Julio. Oh, there.
Just want to echo August. I wanted to clear up a couple of things about the Kellogg Harbor Library. One, it is not a private organization. It is a private public organization. So there's a difference there. I don't want the mythology to be that it's some corporate entity, some private place on the hill, that, that we have no business serving. The other thing is that the, the number of people served in town, 591 people have cards. If those people paid the $40, you know, break it down between the 35 over 65 and 40, but let's just go with the $40 number. If they were to pay $40, that would decrease what this town would support the library by about $6,000 or $7,000. So where does that affect the Kellogg Harbor? It may affect how many hours are open during the day. It may affect some of the after-school program that exists there. So that, that, there's one thing there. The people in town are not paying $50 for their, for their card. They're paying based on the tax rate. Those 591 people are paying based on the tax rate. So it's not $50 per card. Another thing I'd like to correct is that, or to mitigate the, the notion that some days, there's only five people that are getting dropped off from RUMD. It does not account for all the students. And I think this gentleman spoke eloquently last year and as well brought up this idea about how many students from U-32, middle school and high school, that are using that library on a daily basis, from U-32 and, okay. So from the school bus company, that's fine, but there are so many students that are coming and going. I think this, this gentleman attested to that last year about his community of, of friends that come into that building, whether they're coming down the hill on the, the school bus, or they're getting, getting a ride down, or if they're walking down. So I just wanted to point that out. A couple of interesting things. We have some statistics here. The money that we pay to support that library only pays for about 3.2 percent of the total operating budget. So for us to go to Montpelier to, to get books for, for this preschool program, or for students to use the computers, or for the, the thousands of programs that are run every year that we can all participate in, that's a pretty good deal. For that price, we're getting, we're getting the full use of that, of that library. I know budgets are tight. Looking at this, this full budget, my taxes are going way up too. And we make choices about that. The value of, of the Kellogg Harbor in our community is, is something that people have talked about over the years. I echo that, especially in this era of fake news, et cetera, et cetera. People go to the library to get real news. They go to the library to get educated. They go to the library to enliven this culture and this community and, and to up, upgrade the civil discourse because they know more. And I think we should value that. I wanted to make one more point, which has eluded me for some reason. Yep, I get a kick out of it when it disappears from my mind too. Yep, I do. I really do. The use we get out of this library is, is tremendous. We've supported it over the years. I know what my last point was, that if, if all the surrounding towns kick in to support the library, Montpelier plays quite a bit more to make the library roll. So by virtue of that, they're supporting our use of the library as, as well. And the five surrounding towns plus Montpelier keeps that place alive. If we were to cut down this, this support, and if every other town were to do that, it would be very likely that, that the library would shut down one, two days a week maybe. So we're all in this together. I think middle sex has to pay its share of this community expense to keep a vibrant cultural gem going.
Are you ready for the question? Looks like we have some more people who want to talk. Vic?
I, I feel the passion for, for this library and spending $30,000 and it's only 3 percent. But I still hear Sarah Neriman, and what's it worth? This money could be well better spent to help her and the rest of the people down at the town hall and the radon mitigation. And maybe stop someone else from getting cancer, which would be far more in my mind than helping the Kellogg Library.
Any further? Yes, back here.
Hi, Fred McCullough. I've been listening to this Kellogg Harbor Library debate for a lot of years. And the thing, I, I see a lot of passion for the library, and I, there's no doubt about it. But I, I don't know that it's in the town's purview to deal with the library as much as it should be a personal choice to give to the library. And I see a lot of people that are really strong, feel strongly about the library, and I think they ought to give themselves, they can, there's nothing to stop them from donating themselves. And we do have, this is about, I think a, a lot of this argument is really about priorities and where we're headed with, with the tax rate in the town and where everybody's struggling to, to, you know, pay their taxes. And this is, yeah, the library is something that's always comes up. It seems to be the one that, that really gets people fired up. But I think it's more about priorities and, and what should we be spending our money on? And sometimes you have to make hard choices. So that's, that's just my opinion on this.
Is there anybody who hasn't spoken yet on this article who would like to speak? Lisa Carlson.
We're not right now being given a choice between fixing the radon situation or the elevator at town hall versus the library. I've, I've been struggling with whether to say anything because of the issue that, that August brought up. I know there are neighbors who are struggling to pay taxes. I'm hoping that the select board can maybe look into the idea of, of tax relief. For the moment, we're not giving, we as a town are not being given the option of discussing or figuring that one out, but I hope that that one can get figured out because I know I want to support the library and I know we certainly have limited funds. But if we as a town can coalesce and do these things, then we can have a beautiful town. And if we can do it in a way that, that, that people who cannot do this can apply for tax relief, then that seems like that could solve both, both issues. But right now, we're not giving, being given a choice between Kellogg Harbor Library versus fixing the elevator. We don't have that choice. We haven't been given that choice yet. But, but in terms of lower-income people having access to information and all of us being equal in that respect, having access to computers, having access to books, having access to information, libraries are the great equalizer in that respect. And if we were, if we were being given a choice between making, making the town clerk's office safe versus the library, I, I probably might have, have to go that way. But we're not being given that choice right now.
There's a hand in the back. Yes. Can you bring the microphone back there?
Hi, Kathy Shapiro. I agree with what a lot of people have said. Notably, Wendy said something about, we have to think about the fact that a lot of programs that used to be funded from the federal level, the taxes we pay there are no longer being funded. But I think we also really have to think of the library like public education, our schools. It's a place, the library is a place that is a repository of information, of history, of culture. It's a place where all of us can go, we can have a meeting room for free, we can put on events with audiovisual equipment that is there. We can, we can utilize all the services people have talked about. It's a public good. And I'm sad that, I mean, the tax question aside, which I also feel is a real issue. But I feel bad that only 500 people in our town have library cards. We should all use the library. It has tremendous services for everyone. And if you never go, why don't you walk in and think about getting a card? Think about, look at all the services that are offered to our children, whether yours are grown now or not, that the library offers to the children of middle sex and all the towns. And I think as citizens of this community, not only middle sex, it's extremely important to keep that as a, as a community resource for ourselves and our, our fellow community members.
Thanks. I think we are ready for the question. Are we? Seeing a lot of nodding heads. Any objections to moving on to the vote? Article 14 is, shall the town voters authorize expenditures of $29,801 to support the Kellogg Harbor Library? It's in your warning. And it is, as it is right now, it's not been amended, and we are going to vote on that by paper ballots. Is Sarah? Yes. Okay. So can you speak to that for us?
I can speak to that for us.
How about grab a microphone from one of our trusty runners?
So the way this works is we have slips of paper there. Some of them say yes, no, left over from another vote. And then some are just blank. We have pens. So you go over there, you write yes or no on the slip of paper, then you line up here, and we will check you off the checklist, and then you deposit your vote into the ballot box. It's kind of the same thing. Pretty simple.
So wait, so why are there some that are written already?
Well, back when we had the school votes, we had to do.
So you can use those if you want to.
Okay.
And then afterwards, we are, we'll count those ballots. We will announce the results, and we will move on to Article 15. That's how this works. Eighty people voted yes, and 31 people voted no. So eighty, eighty people voted yes, 31 people voted no. So Article 14, the ayes have it. Eighty to 31. Do we have microphone runners? Yes, we do still. That's great. Awesome. Thank you. Okay, folks, grab some dinner if you'd like some, and we will get back to business. Thanks, Mary. Article 15. Shall the town vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $7,000 for the support of the Montpelier Senior Activity Center to provide services to residents of the town? Is there a motion on Article 15? Sarah Sussman, sorry, Susan Sussman moves, and Julie Moore seconds. Article 15 has been moved and seconded. $7,000 for the Montpelier Senior Activity Center. Is there discussion? Yes. Microphone right back here, please. Sarah, Susan Sussman.
Come on up to the front if you want. No. No. Okay. Linda Fenton. My husband and I do go to the middle, Montpelier Senior Center for dinner twice a week. And either late December or early January, they pass the paper to get on the petition for town meeting here. And my husband and I signed it, but the request was for $5,000. So I'm wondering why it's now jumped up to $7,000.
Can the folks over by the door, hey, Kimberly?
Kimberly.
Okay, great. Thank you. Other comments on Article 15, Montpelier Senior Center?
That was a question?
Oh, that was a question? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I missed it.
How did it go from $5,000 to $7,000?
Is there anybody here who can speak to the Montpelier Senior Activity Center article?
Sarah.
Yes. Microphone right here.
Hugo Leitman, Garand Hill Road. Sarah? All I can.
Go ahead.
I notice on page 72, which is the report of the Senior Activity Center, they acknowledge that they are increasing their funding request. It appears from the reading of the report that they had an increase in number of participants from middle sex. That's how I read their report. But like I'm in and out of the library every week, I'm in and out of the Senior Activity Center many times a week for Pilates, yoga, ukulele group, writing groups. And actually, this is a great facility for people who have limited income because their fees are very nominal and the quality of their programs is excellent. There's also some free meals or low-cost meals. It's a very well-run facility, and I think it's a great bargain and a great asset that middle sex folks can have use of their craft programs, reading programs, writing programs, exercise programs. Have a very wa, varied list of opportunities for folks. Thank you.
Peter, did you have a comment?
So to the person who had the question about the $5 versus the $7,000, the petition that the town received was for $7,000. So I don't know.
Yeah, I think Hugo just pointed out that they, that their report says that their usage has gone up and therefore the number went up this year. So last year was $5,000, this year was $7,000. Other discussion on Article 15? Looks like you're ready for the question. Shall the town vote to raise or appropriate and expend the sum of $7,000 for the support of Montpelier Senior Activity Center? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? The ayes have it, and Article 15 has passed. Super fun watching you guys vote with your mouth full. I'm really enjoying this.
Susan.
Yes.
Who seconded that motion? I've almost got every word I could spit out.
Very good. Julie Moore. Good remembering. Article 16. Shall the town voters authorize expenditures of $10,000 to support the Waterbury Senior Center's Meals on Wheels program? Is there a motion on Article 16? Say it nice and loud.
You're front of good.
Thank you. Eric Dammidick moves. Is there a second? Lisa Carlson. Article 16, $10,000 to Waterbury Senior Center's Meals on Wheels program has been moved and seconded. Any discussion on Article 16? I'm feeling pretty done talking. You ready for the question? Shall the town voters authorize expenditures of $10,000 to support Waterbury Senior Center's Meals on Wheels? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? The ayes have it, and Article 16 passes. Article 17, to see if the town of Middlesex will appropriate a sum not to exceed $4,368 to support a list of 20 organizations listed in your warning. And unless there's an objection, I will not read all of them, but take a look. Is there a motion on Article 17? Lisa Carlson moves. Kyle Anderson, another seconds. Article 17, to see if the town of Middlesex will appropriate a sum not to exceed $4,368 to support these 20 organizations? Any discussion? Yes. Second. Okay. It's moved and seconded. Where were we? Moved, seconded, discussion. Okay. Is there discussion? That's where we're at. Yes.
So I just wanted to address the comment that someone made earlier regarding, you know, the small amounts that people are asking for. And I just wanted to...
And I just wanted to shed a little bit of light, as someone who works for a nonprofit, when someone asks for $250, it's actually sort of a token request that one helps them gain exposure, but also, more importantly, it shows support from town. So when they ask for bigger monies through larger grants, they can show that they have support from, you know, a wide variety of people. So I think it's important that we, as a town, you know, show that we care about these small amounts that are being asked because it offers the opportunity for leveraging much greater dollars to keep these organizations going.
Other discussion? Yes.
I just have a question about Big Heavy World.
Can you bring the microphone over?
I just have a question about Big Heavy World. They are a blog and a website, as far as I know. I don't know that they do any nonprofit work.
It's on page 76. Looks like... Can you bring the microphone back there? Yes, they're right up. Big Heavy World is on page 76.
So I can speak to Big Heavy World just because I'm familiar with the organization. They do support for the arts, specifically support for musicians. They've done everything from, they have a museum space that documents Vermont's contributions to the music world. It's in Burlington, in, it's almost south Burlington. The, but they do stuff like, they let bands use their vehicle to do shows up and down the East Coast when bands need a vehicle to tour. They lend out instruments when bands have had things stolen or have things break, that kind of thing. So they do a lot of, they also are kind of heavily involved in trying to help bands with promotional work and to get their, to get their music out there. So that's what they do.
Any other discussion on Article 17? Thank you. Are you ready for the question? See if the town of Middlesex will appropriate a sum not to exceed $4,368 to support these 20 organizations? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article 17 has passed. Article 18 is to transact any other business that may legally come before the meeting. Does anybody have any other business they would like to raise?
If you bought dinner, there's lots of desserts out right here at this back table.
Good. That's what, that's the kind of other business I'm talking about. Yes. Mary.
I'm Mary Nealon. I just had a quick announcement. I'm with the Middlesex Trails Committee, and we're a working group that came out of What's Next, Middlesex. I have a quick survey here. We'll post it on Front Porch Forum because I'm sure everyone's ready to go home and go to bed at this point, but I just wanted to let you know about us. We're actually a subcommittee of the Conservation Commission now, so we're looking for community input about getting some trails networks in Middlesex. So if you have a chance and can answer our survey, we'd be grateful. Thank you.
The What's Next, Middlesex committees, all four of them continue to meet, and I know that the Events Committee is doing a mud season event, a series of events, and there are flyers about that as well. Kimberly Jessup is here. She is our representative, and she's under the impression that you might not be that interested in having her hold forth. But she is prepared to do so if people have questions for her, or you can catch her afterwards. Kimberly is here. She can wave. Thank you for coming, Kimberly. Is there any other business? Yes.
Just as a reminder, thank you for supporting the Middlesex Food Shelf. And if you want to volunteer, the sign-up sheet is back there, and I know my son and Eva Jessup would love to have more volunteers. And it's really easy, and you get to meet other people in the central Vermont community who are in need of food. Thanks. And thanks for bringing the canned goods that people brought today.
If you have any comments about town meeting that you'd like to leave on the evaluation form, you can put them in here. Otherwise, we'd still like to get them back blank because we can use them next year. Thank you to our microphone runners, the ones who are left. Thanks very much. You guys are awesome. Wonderful to have young people at our meeting. So, meeting adjourned. Thank you so much.